Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 6:30 PM Tuesday, February 16th, 2010. At this time, I would invite you to join us for the invocation and the pledge. Commissioner Bowman?
Before I start, Madam Chair, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Scott and Veronica Reese, pastors at Living Way Baptist Church, uh, Living Way Christian Church. Veronica went in the hospital just recently with, uh, in the emergency room and 45 years old, four kids, one, the youngest being eight years old, passed away that night. And she's one of our police department chaplains, and it's with a heavy heart that a lot of us are up here because we knew them recently well in the community. So if you would remember them in your prayers, we would greatly appreciate it. Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the many things that you've sent our way. Lord, we ask that you protect our young men and women that are serving in the service, to keep us free, Father, that we might have this meeting tonight, that all of us may come together, Lord, in one mind, in one accord, and that we may be about your business, that we may make the decisions that are right and the decisions that affect the members of Henry County and the citizens. Lord, we ask that you give us wisdom and that we do the things that you'd have us to do and be the ones you'd have us to be. In all these things, I pray in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So move back, Chair.
We have a motion by Mr. Stamey. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The first item on the agenda is a resolution requesting approval to relocate three early-voting satellite locations. Our presenter is Ms. Janet Shalnut, Director of Elections and Registration, and that's handout number one. Good evening.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, we've worked real hard to establish five early-voting precincts throughout the county. It gives one early-voting precinct in each district, but what we tried to do this go around was to line up some early-voting precincts with municipal precincts so people won't have so many places to go to vote. I know recently the Justice Department has come down very hard on some counties that they go to two and three places to vote when you put a city and a county together. So with our five, we will keep our main office as one, the Fairview Library as one, and then we have three new locations that we'd like for y'all to agree with us upon. This is more of an informational resolution. We, you know, we have to send everything to the Justice Department, and they do like to have a resolution from the Commissioners that seems to go through much faster. So are there any questions?
Any board member have a question? Mr. Bowman?
Yes, ma'am. I think one on the Stockbridge location is that's currently on a renovation, so there's a necessity to move that one, for sure.
I went up and looked at it last week. They finished it. It is completely finished. Where we used to vote was the old Cochrane Library.
That's the one I'm talking about now.
Yeah, and it's dug up.
That's the reason for needing them. There's two reasons really we needed to move that one. There's traffic trying to get in and out of there with a bear.
That's right.
But moving it to the other one, I'm just making a comment that that's a, that's a good move because it's a lot easier to get in and out.
That's right. I think they're moving the police to one place and, uh, code officers to another, and we're actually in the new community center that's underneath the bridge on, is it Berry Street?
Right.
And they've done a fabulous job of renovating it, so.
Great.
Any other questions from board members? All right, if not, you have before you a resolution supporting the relocation of the three early-voting satellite locations, and I will entertain a motion.
I look to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder, a second by Mr. Jeffries. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. You also have the next item on the agenda, which is a resolution adopting and establishing a fee for the voter registration list and files, and that's going to be handout number two.
This particular resolution is to reprice our CD-ROMs that we sell to candidates or, these are not for monetary gain. We do get calls from time to time, people wanting to buy them to establish a business, and I think this relines our fees with the state also. I didn't find out till recently they were charging more because Georgia Technology charges them more. So I see a lot of downhill, you know, prices falling from the state going to the county, and what we wanted to do is be more in line with the cost, and we also think with this data, it has your voter registration number, your name, your address. They did take the age off. It has your racial makeup and when you last voted. And most of the times, the ones that we sell are for candidates to, you know, try to send out mailouts or to find out actually who's registered to vote. And I think we sell more of the ones that find out who voted because we can tell them after an election who actually voted. So what we were trying to do is line our prices up exactly close to the state's price. And this would be a user fee too, and those that are using it would be paying for it, you know.
Well, and your staff spends a lot of time putting this together.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. We have to sort each, we get one a month from the Secretary of State's office. We take that particular CD-ROM and put it in Excel form and then sort it to whichever candidate's what they need, like City of McDonough may only want one district. We have to take 135 voters and pull that City of McDonough out, and then from that, pull those voters into that district. So it does take quite a bit of time. We have learned not to sell them the raw data that comes from the state because people, especially that aren't computer savvy, have problems with it. So we fix it to where they could have exactly what they want, okay?
Are there any questions or comments from board members? All right, if not, you have before you a resolution to adopt and establish a fee for obtaining the voter registration list and files, and I will entertain a motion.
So.
Have a motion by Mr. Bazler and a second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to administration, a resolution requesting approval to apply for the Georgia Department of Transportation grant for public transportation assistance. Our presenter is Mr. David Williamson, Transit Director, exhibit number seven. Good evening.
Good evening. We are requesting permission to apply for the Georgia Department of Transportation's Rule 5311 program. The county's been a participant in this program for the past 20 years. This particular grant provides operating assistance. The county would be eligible for up to $490,913 in reimbursement assistance, and the county match would be $417,000 and four, $417,000 and $413,000.
Do we have any questions or comments from board members?
Madam Chair, I agree.
Mr. Bazler?
Uh, Mr. Williamson, is this in the budget?
It would be, yes, sir.
Though I don't have an open budget?
Yes, sir.
I have no further questions.
Any additional questions? All right, if not, you have a resolution before you granting approval to apply for the GDOC grant for public transportation assistance, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Jeffries. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to planning and zoning services. The first item is a presentation of the LCI study draft plan for the Hudson Bridge-Jonesboro Road Connector Activity Center. Our presenter is Brecka Johnson, Planner Two, and Caleb Raycott, LCI Consultant Team Project Manager, exhibit number eight. Good evening.
Good evening, Board. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present the draft LCI plan to each of you, along with the City of Stockbridge, City Council, Zoning Advisory Board members, and stakeholders, and the general public. Last February, the Atlanta Regional Commission awarded Henry County $100,000 in grant funding with a 20% county match for a, an LCI study for portions of property located along the eastern and western sides of Interstate 75 corridor, and it stretches from Hudson Bridge Road down to Jonesboro Road. The Hudson Bridge-Jonesboro Roads Connector Activity Center, LCI, will provide the framework for how this corridor should develop over the next 25 to 30 years. The intent of the livable centers initiative study is to encourage coordination with land use patterns and transportation options, and also to integrate mixed uses while providing pedestrian and vehicular connectivity. The LCI consultant team and the Planning and Zoning Department has worked in conjunction with the City of Stockbridge, community stakeholders, and the Henry County citizens to prepare draft recommendations and concept plans for the future development of the LCI study. Tonight, our goal is to update you on the status of the study and receive feedback over time to improve the plan. We will have a follow-up meeting for the final plan recommendations on March 16th at 6:30 to receive final comments on the plan. Henry County is going to be charged with the responsibility of adopting the Hudson Bridge-Jonesboro Roads Connector Activity Center into the Comprehensive Plan and Unified Land Development Code so that Henry County can receive future funding for transportation projects. At this time, I'd like to introduce Caleb Rosico of Tunnel, Spangler, Wash, and Associates. He's our consultant team project manager.
Thank you very much, Brecka, and good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. As Ms. Johnson has mentioned, the LCI planning process has been an extensive planning project that we have been looking at for the past nine months to develop a long-term vision for the area of Henry County between Hudson Bridge Road and Jonesboro Road. As you're aware, this is a very large area that is currently largely vacant and represents a tremendous opportunity to think about how and, and what the county grows into. The planning process has been going on since June of last year, and we have been working in a series of steps throughout that effort, beginning with an inventory of existing conditions, a visioning process, and of course, what we are in now, which is development of a draft plan and eventual feedback loop for that plan. Following that, we will develop a final plan, as Ms. Johnson mentioned, and then present that to you for review. Before I talk specifically about recommendations coming from the plan, I would like to stress the wonderful amount of public outreach that we've had with the residents, businesses, and property owners in Henry County. We've had four meetings to date, and we've had a very good turnout of, of all, all different types of people, including over 200 stakeholders from the immediate area. The planning process has also engaged people other than members of the general public. There has been a core team, which is representative of technical advisors, property owners, and then residents from nearby neighborhoods, who have reviewed and, and informed the plan that you're about to see tonight. We've also used a variety of web-based outreach techniques to provide information, to provide Facebook, um, Facebook outreach, and of course, to provide an image preference survey where we asked residents to envision the future of the study area. We've also utilized an email listserv of about 300 people and, along with collateral materials posted at area businesses and high-traffic locations. The result of that image preference survey and that entire outreach process has been very, very positive and very favorable. The image preference survey, as you know, was taken by nearly 200 residents of Henry County and developed general visions for what the area could be. The three images you have in front of you this evening are some of the highly, most highly rated images from that process. These are images of a parkway, a place that is very green, and a place that is very walkable, which is a message that we've heard over and over again throughout the process. We also embarked on a series of charrettes or community workshops. During the first charrette, we asked residents and businesses to think about what they would like the area to be as it grew over the next 25 to 50 years. Some of the ideas that came out of that include a place that was mixed use, a place that had offices, housing, retail, and civic uses, a place that was very walkable, a place that was connected by a variety of transportation options, but very importantly, a west-side parkway, multi-use trails, and then potential future Greta Express transit. And very importantly, the public told us they have a very strong desire for preserving and protecting public and open spaces in the corridor, along the creeks, in new development, and then around existing ponds. At the second charrette, we built upon those ideas emerging from the first charrette and developed three scenarios for land use within the study area. These alternatives varied, but generally speaking, they ranged from a conventional land use development model based on existing zoning and development permission, a model that was somewhat walkable, and then a model that was very walkable and very mixed use. Based on the feedback of that meeting, we heard very clearly there was a desire for the most walkable land use model, the one that has the broadest mix of uses and the most open space, along with a desire once again for the west-side parkway, near-term vehicular upgrades, bicycle improvements, longer-term creation of an interconnected street, and then very importantly, a plan that was very flexible, that defined general land uses and allowed developers to implement the planned vision as appropriate. And so the recommendations that I'm about to present to you have been based on that very extensive and open public planning process. The key organizing principle of the land use recommendations are that there is an opportunity to develop five walkable centers within this very large area extending from Hudson Bridge Road to Jonesboro Road. These include locations at Hudson Bridge, Jodico North, the Transit Village, which is off of Patrick Henry Parkway, Jodico South, which is a site of the proposed Jodico Summit Shopping Center, and then along Jonesboro Road. Within that framework, key open space projects and sites should be preserved, including Pates Creek and Walnut Creek, and then very importantly, connections should be provided between those centers, again, a west-side parkway, multi-use trails, and then secondary new streets with development. Based on that very general framework, we worked with properties, property owners, nearby residents, and business owners to develop a more detailed land use vision, which is called the Framework Plan. This is a planning-level tool that is intended to show how in general land use colors the area could grow over the next 25 to 50 years. It is not a site plan, but is, it is a long-term aspiration from the county's perspective about how and where growth could occur. Generally speaking, the Framework Plan shows the highest density growth in the northern part of the study area within the City of Stockbridge's current high-rise overlay district. Within this area, land uses are envisioned to be mixed use in character, other than the preserved open spaces along Pates Creek, and vehicular upgrades are recommended that are going to support this land use project, including, very importantly, a parkway running from Hudson Bridge Road to Jonesboro Road, an intersection improvement at Patrick Henry Parkway and Country Club Drive, and then a series of bicycle and pedestrian upgrades, walk, sidewalks along Patrick Henry Parkway, and then a multi-use trail along the Pates Creek corridor. Moving south, just north of Jodico Road, if you will, the land use vision calls for creating another center in that area. Generally speaking, this would be another mixed-use, walkable location. It would include a sizable office component, recognizing that there's a very strong need to create jobs and improve employment in the county, and this area is very well suited for that. Vehicular upgrades to support that vision include the parkway, which would run through this area. They include a new road that would actually run from McCurry Road over the parkway and then over to Patrick Henry Parkway, and they exclude, they include an extension of McCurry Road to the proposed parkway corridor. There are also bicycle and pedestrian improvements recommended here, including sidewalks on Patrick Henry Parkway, as was mentioned, and a multi-use trail along the north side of Jonesboro Road. Within this particular area, we also went one step further and looked at what we're calling the Transit Village, which is a 77-acre property around the proposed Greta, Greta Park and Ride Lot. Within this area, we wanted to show a model of how a more walkable village center could be created, and so we went into a great level of design detail and showed how, in fact, you could incorporate retail, housing, a sizable office component, commuter parking, and then civic institutions. We also looked very carefully at the financial ramifications of this and found that, in fact, it was profitable from a developer's perspective, even with some of the higher-density improvements recommended, particularly if a tax allocation district were done, and I'll, I'll talk about that in a moment. We prepared some graphics showing how that could look because, again, it's very important to understand the nature of this place, and those were, those were based on the public comments received at the core team meeting and then from charrettes one and two. Another site that we looked at, which is very important in this area, is what we're calling Jodico North. That's the piece of property between the Justice Family Property and Jodico Road. This is a 234-acre site that has an opportunity to become a mixed-use development, but one that is designed with the lay of the land rather than against it. Within this area, we developed a plan showing large retail facilities along Hudson, along I-75, more mixed-use residential facilities adjacent to the neighborhoods on the west, and then very importantly, a series of parks and open spaces that would connect all of these together, but still provide, still provide the higher-density development within that area for the offices, the retail, and the other uses that are critical. For this area, we also looked at the financial viability and found that it is, it is largely workable. An important part of this plan as well is the opportunity to create a fairly substantial office address right along I-75 overlooking the two, the pond on the Justice Family Property. Within this area, the Framework Plan calls for mid-rise office buildings that could take advantage of the parkway, they could take advantage of the proposed connector between McCurry Road and, and Patrick Henry Parkway, and then they could, of course, take advantage of the pond in that area. The retail district, as I mentioned, could also be on that side of the site and could take advantage of access on I-75. The southern part of the study area has a very similar vision, but is envisioned as being the higher retail-oriented part of the study area. Obviously, again, this is the site of the proposed Jodico Summit, and so we wanted to show a plan in that area that reflected the community's vision of having something that was more walkable. Within this, the plan includes a series of open spaces. Most significantly, the plan calls for utilizing an existing creek ravine in that area to provide water retention and a linear park. It calls for extending the west-side parkway through that site. It calls for keeping Mount Olive Road along I-75 and converting it to a frontage road long-term, and it calls for some pedestrian and vehicular improvements at the intersection of Chambers and Mount Olive Road. Here as well, we went one step further and looked at how that site could actually be laid out in a way that reflected the LCI vision and the proposed development program of the Jodico Summit site. The concept plan for the 164 acres shows a very extensive retail core of comparable yield to what is programmed by the proposed project, but it shows it in more of a Main Street-type setting with opportunities for housing, offices, and parks and open spaces on the site as well. We heard overwhelmingly from the public that this development site is a great opportunity to actually create a town center for Henry County and that whatever happens there, the public would like to see some sort of communal open space or community open space. The retail core, obviously, is a very important part of that vision, and so we, again, respected and reflected the vision of, of a sizable retail center, but made it much more pedestrian-friendly. And of course, recognizing that that site is adjacent to housing and churches, we showed transitional residential uses along the edges of the property, including on Mount Olive Road and Chambers Road. And then finally, within the southern part of the study area, the land use plan recognizes that that area is largely built out today. You have the Henry Town Center Shopping Center, you've got the McDonough Christian Church, but there is an opportunity longer term for another walkable mixed-use center to be created within that area. Long-term, again, 25, 30, 40 years down the road, even the Henry Town Center property will probably redevelop, and so we wanted to show a plan that reflected that long-term potential. Open spaces in this area include, as I mentioned, along Pates, along Walnut Creek, and then smaller opportunities for parks within the private redevelopment sites. Pedestrian improvements include a multi-use trail along Walnut Creek and then a multi-use trail along Jonesboro Road that would provide a way to get across I-75. The plan also includes other recommendations besides transportation and land use. Other key transportation recommendations include conducting a supplemental study of this area to more carefully address the future traffic impact of new development as it occurs. They also include providing an access management program for all new development in the corridor to make sure that as new development comes in, transportation and traffic flow are still provided, and it included recommendations for some sort of private shuttle associated with the major retail development. The plan also includes a series of voluntary best-management practices for developers, including green development techniques, architectural design standards, and then the plan also includes a series of recommendations for gateway markers to really brand the neighborhood and create something special, as long, as well as public art opportunities throughout the study area. Now, the general vision, as we've mentioned, is a long-term vision, and it's going to take the involvement of the county and the private sector to achieve the vision. Implementation tools are going to be very important to make this happen. As Ms. Johnson mentioned earlier, there will need to be an activity center zoning code created for this area, and that is something that is currently being drafted by the consultant team as part of the planning effort. It will make sure that that zoning code preserves existing development rights, and it will make sure that the plan is legal, but again, that people have their current development rights to date. There will also need to be amendments to the comp plan. This and the zoning code should occur within six months of plan adoption to make the county eligible for transportation funds. But then, very importantly, longer term, the consultant team and the market analyst on the team determined that it probably makes sense for Henry County to look at utilizing tax allocation districts within this particular area. As you may know, a tax allocation district is an economic development tool that has been used in other areas to finance development that is, that is more complex, more walkable, more aesthetic than conventional development patterns. This would be used to fund streetscapes, it would be used, could be used to fund transportation improvements, and very importantly, it could be used to fund federal transportation requests by providing a potential 20% match. Longer term, the plan also recommends the creation of a community improvement district for this area. A CID is a group of individuals and property owners who come together to actively market and be stewards of how the area develops and grows. Again, the LCI plan is a lot more complex than conventional development patterns, and CIDs have proven very successful in Buckhead, Perimeter Center, Cumberland, at creating these high-quality, highly-desirable commercial and business addresses. Both tools will be very carefully, will need very careful study by the county for advantages and disadvantages, but we believe they are going to be important tools to making the LCI vision happen. And so with that said, we have about a month and a half before us to finalize the master plan before a completed document is presented over to you. What we would like to do tonight is answer any questions that you may have. We have our market experts here and our transportation experts. We also would like the public to have an opportunity to review some of the drawings out front and provide any feedback to us out there as well. As Brecka mentioned, there will be a final plan presentation here on March 16th, and we will be using that to, to provide the elements that have been changed based on tonight and more detailed plan recommendations. Thank you.
Caleb, I'm sure some of the board members probably have a question. I, I have one that I would like to ask, and this is in reference to McCurry Road and the extending that to the east side of I-75. Is that being proposed as a new bridge across there, or how, how are you planning to take McCurry Road across I-75?
Yes, it would, in fact, be a new bridge. It, it would not actually be McCurry Road, it would be what is called the McCurry Road Connector. If you come down I-75, just when you go past Hudson Bridge Road, there's an area on the right-hand side with a bunch of billboards. There, that area and the area on the opposing side of I-75 are high points, and so long-term, it would actually be feasible to create a roadway that connected from McCurry Road to Patrick Henry Parkway in that area. We understand that this is a very, very expensive proposition, we understand that this is a very long-term project, but from a transportation planning perspective, the areas that work the best are those where local traffic doesn't have to mix with interstate traffic to get across the interstate, and the consultant team feels that long-term, even if it's not within 10 to 15 years, long-term, it will make sense to have a way across the interstate other than at Henry, at Hudson Bridge, Jodico Road, or Jonesboro Road.
Well, I think it's important to note that when we're talking about transportation projects of this magnitude, it is wise to begin the planning stages at this point. We have been waiting for the Jodico Road Bridge to get under construction, which has been in the transportation plan since 1999, and many years before that, in an effort to get it to the point where it was listed in the state transportation plan. So it's not unreasonable to begin planning for a, a bridge at this time because the amount of time it takes to get through that process. Did any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Holder? Mr. Holder?
First question would be, how much of this proposed LCI lies within the city limits of Stockbridge?
Very good point. Generally speaking, it's about 25%, and it tends to be the areas along Hudson Bridge Road, and then the actual transit village site is partially within the city of Stockbridge because there's an unusual annexation within that area. But generally speaking, it's the areas to the north.
Has Stockbridge been involved in this?
Yes, they have. Ted Strickland has been on our advisory committee. We've also had commissioners attending as part of the core team. And then, as you know, Raymond Gibson, who was with Henry County, is now with the city of Stockbridge and has been the liaison for that effort.
I understand. Okay, the second question would be, this is hypothetical, but this basically ends up being an overlay district, correct?
From a zoning perspective, yes.
From a zoning perspective, that's it. Okay, hypothetical, and one of the comments that you made was that it was the intent to preserve existing zoning. What if anyone, myself, or anybody out there tonight, owned a piece of property that was currently zoned, C2, C3, M1, whatever the case might be, within this LCI? And according to what you have it designated for, we're going to say that C3 ends up being open space. Now, how will that person be compensated for the difference in the price of open-space property in C3 or just one of the higher, even the higher residential zones? How is that going to work?
Well, regarding the open space, most of the open space shown is actually within the floodplains of Pates Creek or Walnut Creek, so a good deal of it is unbuildable. However, you are right, we have shown open spaces on individual development sites. The idea being that if a project comes in and cannot, or a developer elects to not use their current C3 zoning or C2 zoning, and they want to do something different, they would have to rezone through the usual process, through the board. But there will be design standards that will be part of the overlay. We haven't worked out the specifics, but generally speaking, they will be things that do not relate to permitted uses. There'll be things like architectural detail similar to your current architectural controls. There'll be things, including perhaps the flexibility to do shared parking more easily. They'll include sidewalk standards, but the idea is not that the framework plan is a site-specific requirement for individual land uses. It is an aspiration, and we know that every development project that comes in is going to have a detailed design program, a detailed development program, that needs to be reflected. And so, we've tried to make that fairly general, other than the open spaces that are currently protected as they are.
Based on these proposals that we see according to the color-coded map, how will that be done? Is it first-come, first-served? How will you arrive at who gets what and where and when? Is it based on percentages of the entire project or the LCI? Is it, you're going to have 20% this, 20% so forth and so on, in each of the three? Or is it overall? How will the people know that own the property what they will actually be entitled to as far as the ability to develop their property? How will that be done?
Well, they would be, as I mentioned, entitled to all the permitted uses and density requirements and provisions that there are today. If they rezone, and again, we haven't actually written the complete zoning ordinance yet, but if they rezone, it would probably give the board the power to condition other LCI requirements. We don't expect that anything, again, in the plan is absolute. We expect that all the C2 and C3 properties that are there have a tremendous amount of development right today, as you all know, and that they have the opportunity to build under that. And remember, our core team members have included major property owners, the Shalender Group, Inland Properties, the LLCs to the north within the city of Stockbridge, whose name escapes me today. So we have had their general buy-in. What we're trying to do now is get comments from everyone so that we can put that draft code together and present it for public review and comment.
Okay, excuse me, but you just mentioned a couple of groups, the Shalander Group and various others. You also mentioned a family property that was 150 acres or... Let's just take as an example. Obviously, everybody that owns property there does not own 100 acres or up. What would happen if a person had a residence in this particular area and did not want to be moved, but would we go in and force that person to move?
Oh, absolutely not. A very important piece of this plan is that it assumes all land use regulations, all land use elements are private sector. We are not recommending in any way, shape, or form the use of condemnation or eminent domain for the plan. We expect that we've used very general land use categories, again, that reflect a wide variety of uses, and we expect that all that development that actually does occur is a project that makes sense to the market and makes sense to the property owners, that there would be no county condemnation at all.
But would you ever make the proposed project look like some of the pictures that you showed earlier with the bicycle paths and the different scenes of multifamily, the boulevards, without someone being uprooted?
I'm sorry, without someone being?
Uprooted, without, in other words, one person, and from what you just said, one person could hold out, because if you're not going to condemn, and I'm certainly not promoting condemnation by any stretch, I just want to be sure that we're not, but it wouldn't take but one property owner that could theoretically stop a community from looking the way you think it needs to look.
And that's the advantage and the disadvantage of our system. It's got to be market-based. I will say, as you all know, there is the power for transportation projects to require... The county does have the ability to use condemnation for transportation projects. The parkway alignment, we have tried and we have worked with the property owners in that area. We have talked to every single property owner along the proposed parkway alignment, all in general, support the idea because it does provide them with access, but, as you know, once it actually goes into right-of-way acquisition, things can change. And that would be the only case where the county may have to look at using that power or changing the proposed route.
That's all I have.
Any other questions from board members?
Actually, Warren, pretty well hit them all. Good job. It's just some concerns that I have, because any time we try to do an overlay, or this is one of the problems that I have seen and have said from the beginning, and I know Ray Gibson's out there tonight and a very smart planner, but when we had the nodal concept with our new comp plan, it's not real difficult to zone properties that are not along busy corridors or intersections, and when you have those cross-road nodes, those school nodes, various activity nodes, that's when it's going to become more difficult to zone, and what you're zoning right here is nothing but a node. Is that not correct?
Essentially, yes.
Essentially, that's it. So that has been a concern of mine, and it's not going to be easy, because everyone that owns property in that area is not going to conform, want to conform to the way that we or you or your company has proposed that we want it to look. This person may be totally happy with a home life or a business life that's consistent with what they want. So it's not going to be an easy one.
I think one of the beauties of this particular plan, it looks like every use within this is a much higher use than what is currently existing on the ground.
That's correct.
The majority of that, well, if you look at the property that's to the north of Jodico Road, there's barely any access to any of that property, so it's going to have an RA zoning. And then, that along Mount Olive also would be a very low use right now because that's a dirt road. So, in the end, it would certainly improve all the property values along that parkway once it's constructed. You did mention something about tax allocation districts, and just to make a comment concerning that, I know our board passed a resolution and sent it up to our state representatives, of course, Steve Davis is the chairman of our delegation here in Henry County, asking them to give the voters of Henry County an opportunity to vote on whether or not they would like to have the ability to utilize a tax allocation district in certain areas. And we're certainly hopeful that our elected officials will give our voters that opportunity, and hopefully, we will know that within the next couple of weeks. But it's a very important tool to have in our toolbox when we're talking about this type of development. We certainly don't want our sploß dollars being spent all on one project, and that parkway is a very costly project, and a tax allocation district would serve very well in this particular area. Mr. Bowman?
Well, I think, understanding and knowing how that Taylor Mathis worked that similar, it's not an overlay, but similar at Perimeter Center, some of the areas that you spoke of, that started in the early '70s, because I actually built several buildings in there early, in the early '70s, so... And it's taken a long time for it to really come around to be, you know, like the pictures are showing. And you said 25 or 30 years, but one comment I'd like to make, and there's a lot of the older communities that ended up staying in pockets, but at the end of the day, the property values increased so much that they, you know, that the owners of the property, they were ready to go, you know? It was like, they could... I know that one particular community, the whole subdivision sold, and they sold it to, oh, God, it doesn't matter who they sold it to, but it was a company out of Texas that bought it, where they put the ravine and the others there. So, those things were planned, DeKalb County made those plans way out there for the Dunwoody area, Perimeter Center, and those areas. And if you don't at least try to plan for something, then we'll be sitting here, you know, somebody will be sitting here, you know, 15, 20 years from now, saying, you know, why didn't we take a look at it? You know, I understand exactly what Warren's talking about, because there's no way I'd want to do any condemnations or do anything like that. I think that what, at the end of the day, though, what would happen is, and it's going to take a long time, but that, you know, their property values would, you know, would increase so much that they would be very happy to, you know, to move and do their thing. But I've seen it happen. I've seen it happen at Perimeter Center, I've seen it happen at the Galleria, Frank Carter with Carter and Associates. The Galleria up on, at 285 and 41, had the big mall there and all the office buildings and multi-use. I mean, that's just another area that it... And it's been going on since the early '70s, so... Those areas, as well as the Corners, the Corners Office Park, that have livable communities that go into Beaufort and some of the other places up there, very gorgeous, but those are things that have been going on for an awfully long time. And it, you know, it don't happen overnight, but your plan looks good. Obviously, there'll be pitfalls in it, but I think that, at the end of the day, that we need to take every opportunity to look at it and to, you know, to see if it's something that'll work and put it in play, you know, if we elect, if this board elects to put it in play. Obviously, and what Chairman Mathis just spoke of, I think it's extremely important. We've got a large crowd here tonight. But I think it's extremely important that the voters get involved, especially if we can get this, if the TAD goes on the ballot, if it goes on the ballot. Read it, understand it, and if you vote either for or against, I'm not trying to tell you how to vote. Actually, you know, I don't know how I will vote on it right now, to be honest with you, but the bottom line is, take a look at it, because any time I feel like that we, as a board, have an opportunity to give you, the citizens, the opportunity to vote on something and to say, yes, we want it for Henry County, or no, we don't, I think that's the best that you can do. And so, I would certainly hope that we have the ability to give you guys the opportunity to vote on it, and, you know, and like I said, you know, vote whatever you feel like, but at least, you know, let's give the citizens an opportunity to look at it. That's all I have.
Mr. Bowman. Mr. Sami?
Chairman, to expand a little bit on Mr. Bowman's comments, Kayla, could you give us some examples of where some TADS are in the metropolitan area, because you've got a good crowd tonight, to maybe educate us a little more?
Some of the most well-known TADS in the region, one of them is Atlantic Station, and, you know, TAD does not mean that Atlantic Station has to be built, but as you may remember, Atlantic Station was a steel mill. And the tax allocation district was used to pay for the public parks that went in there, the new streets that went in there, the very wide sidewalks that went in there, and so that has been very important to making that project happen. Without it, Atlantic Station would be a strip mall. I mean, and that's not a joke. There was a previous plan for a Walmart on that site. It would have not happened without the tax allocation district in its present form. Some other examples are, the city of Marietta has used them, and if you've been to Marietta recently, you've seen a lot of redevelopment around the square. Another comparable area that, again, is somewhat similar to Henry County, I believe, is parts of Gwinnett County are now using the tax allocation district. And they're on the other side of the spectrum because they've already grown around Gwinnett Place Mall, and they're trying to retroactively fix the problems. And so, they've created tax allocation districts in that area to remedy some of the problems. Some other examples are, the Belt Line in Atlanta, again, is a transit route, but does include a very important parks and open space plan. That is also being funded by a tax allocation district. I have, I could defer to our market expert and our expert on TADS if you wanted a more specific answer, since I'm not the TAD expert, he is.
No, I just needed a few examples. That was good. Thank you.
I also want to note, too, in that legislation that we sent, the resolution that we sent up to our legislators, we did include in there the ability for schools to opt out, and I think that's important to note, because we certainly don't want to do anything that could harm our schools in any way at all, and so that provision is in there in order to allow them not to participate if the voters choose to move forward with a TAD referendum. I also want to thank the mayor of Stockbridge for being here tonight, and also some council members from the city of Stockbridge. Mayor Stewart's only been in office probably less than two months now, and I've certainly enjoyed getting to know you and working with you, and it's a great working relationship, and we're very glad that you're here with us tonight. All right, this is not an action item, and this was for informational purposes only, and it was great information, and if you don't have anything further to add, then we will move on in our agenda.
Well, the last thing I wanted to add is, board, thank you for hearing us out, and I think this is an opportunity that we want to really move with. I did want to let the public know that if you're interested in more information about the LCI, we're going to shift over to Conference Room B, which is just down the hall to the right. For any specific questions you might have about the LCI, we can definitely answer for them.
Thank you very much. Great presentation and a great job on the LCI.
Thank you.
Give you just a moment to your material. The next item on the agenda is an appeal, AP-10-01 by Tammy Hoover of McDonough, Georgia, an appeal of an administrative approval granted by the Planning and Zoning Department allowing a wireless communication facility to be erected on property located at 79 Chafin Drive. Our presenter is Mr. Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, and that's exhibit number nine.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I'd kind of give just a brief background, provide a brief background and a brief history of kind of how we got to this point where we are this evening.
Sorry for interrupting. Madam Chairman, members of the board, in light of the fact that you are considering a cell tower appeal, and your actions tonight will be governed not only by the provisions of our local ordinance, but also the Federal Telecommunications Act, which governs what we can and can't do with respect to these matters, I thought it prudent to sort of set forth some procedural guidelines that will enable a smooth and orderly manner of conducting this hearing, and it certainly will give the members of the public and the interested parties an outline of how this hearing will be held tonight. So I just want to, and I'll put this out for... Just for expedient purposes... So, I just want to, and I'll put this out for, just for expedient purposes, I'll go ahead and read what it says, that this hearing is an appeal of an administrative decision made by the Planning and Zoning Director concerning the cell tower application for property located at 79 Chafin Drive, McDonough, Georgia, and is not a new review of the application. The Federal Telecommunications Act limits a local government's ability to deny applications where a cell provider has demonstrated a need for expanded coverage in a particular area. The Director's decision can only be overturned if it was based on an erroneous finding of a material fact, or if it is shown that he acted in an arbitrary manner. In accordance with our ordinance, both sides will have a 15-minute time limit to resent their case. Those who wish to speak in support of the appeal to overturn the Director's decision will be allowed to go first. Those who wish to speak in opposition of the appeal efforts will be allowed to go second. The Federal Telecommunications Act requires any decision of this board to be in writing and to be based upon the evidence in the record, and that record will be established here tonight. Board members may ask questions or have comments during tonight's hearing. However, the board as a whole, based upon my recommendation, will not render a final decision tonight. The board will review the evidence, and with the consent of the county attorney, a decision will be issued at a later date. At the conclusion of the hearing, I suggest a motion be made to table this decision to a date certain for decision only. Finally, since this is an appeal of an administrative decision, please note that the commissioners sit in a quasi-judicial capacity. Board members are not at liberty to discuss the case without the presence of both parties and the county attorney. Therefore, from this point in time, meaning at the conclusion of this hearing, the interested parties should refrain from sending emails or calling to lobby their decision, as the board's decision can only be based upon the evidence that is in the record. So, unless any board member has any questions, I'll turn this back over to Mr. Harris to present this item for your consideration.
Are there any questions from board members? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
As stated, just want to provide some background about the case, and just a brief history concerning how we arrived at this point we are at today. As stated, the wireless communication facility to be located on a site known as Kellytown 2010, properly located at 79 Chafin Drive, was administratively approved with conditions in accordance with the provisions of the Henry County Code of Ordinances back on December 11, 2009. And since that time, a appeal to that decision has been filed, and that was filed on January 7 of this year. And just to kind of go back, to kind of bring us up to date on how we got to this point, back in June of 2009, Henry County Planning and Zoning Staff received six applications for wireless communication facilities. And just to kind of put that into some perspective, as an average over the last two to three years, we've averaged about six applications per year. So, obviously, this was a, caught our attention early on. And in accordance with the code, we sent notifications to adjacent property owners to make them aware that, what locations were being proposed for potential sites. Of the six locations, of the six proposed locations, we received contact back and feedback back from residents adjacent to one of those sites, that's one we're discussing here this evening. As stated, when we received the six, I mean, it certainly made us sit up and take notice as to why we're receiving such a flood of applications in at one time. Began doing a lot of research during that time, both locally, statewide, as well as on a national level, to kind of see what was going on, were there some new trends happening within the telecommunications industry? And sure enough, we discovered that there were. I mean, they're looking at reaching out into more residential areas, because by their research, more residents were using their cell phones at home, as opposed to just on the road or in commercial settings. So, their push, the push had been, and the technology had been to change, such that they're looking at, looking to locate in the more residential areas. In reviewing our ordinance at the time, it was noted that we need to make some provisions. There was someone antiquated, and at that time, the board made the determination back in August 2009, to enact a moratorium for 90 days, to give staff some time to go back to review their current ordinance, and see where and if it need to be tweaked, and need to be adjusted and modified. And so, that time period, we did that. In so doing, we actually sought outside counsel, to kind of, experts within their field, recognized experts within the field, to come in, look at our ordinance, and help us craft a new ordinance, working with our own staff attorney, came up with new language, and added quite a bit more teeth, if you will, to our, to the ordinance that we previously had. However, these initial six applications came in under the old ordinance. While we had outside counsel, we also asked them to do a review of those same six applications to see what could we do from a staff standpoint, what grounds could we have for, ask for additional information, additional studies, things of that nature. So, over the course of the next number of weeks, staff, in conjunction with, again, our own in-house counsel and outside counsel, reviewed the applications in conjunction with our ordinance, ordinance at the time, as well as, you know, to make sure how met the provisions of our ordinance, as well as being bound by the Telecommunications Act of 1996, which kind of gives, was a federal statute, which kind of dictates what can and cannot be done concerning cell towers. Based on both staff review, as well as outside counsel review of the ordinance, we both yielded the same, the same result. A report was done by the outside counsel that has stated that, based on our current ordinance, the applicants, the applications that we received were submitted in accordance with our ordinance. Therefore, we were, we had no grounds in that case to deny the application. But again, I wanted to make sure, make the point that we did go out and do, kind of go above and beyond. We sought outside counselors to make sure we reviewed it and looked at every possible thing we could look at concerning our ordinance, to make sure if there's any way, want to make sure that it completely met our ordinance, the letter of our ordinance at the time. We submitted, we sent the letter of approval to the applicants back in December 11. However, prior to that, staff met with the applicant, shared with them some of the concerns from a number of the citizens, actually conducted a series of meetings. One particular, a couple of town hall meetings were held to hear from the residents, hear what some of their concerns were. And there were some things that were done to help mitigate some of the impact on the adjacent residents. The letter that was sent, the appeal, the approval letter was sent with six conditions. And I'll put those conditions up now for everyone to see. And while many of those conditions were not requirements, the applicant, again, when working with the residents, were agreeable to doing some things above and beyond what our ordinance actually called for at the time. Most notably, some additional landscaping was added. The height of the tower was reduced from 180 down to 150, 50 feet, and they were, they agreed to incorporate a stealth design in their pole, as opposed to the standard monopole And again, tonight, we're here to hear the appeal to that decision. The decision was rendered back in December, and subsequently, an appeal was filed, appealing the decision by staff to approve the application. Happy to address, take any questions you may have.
Does any board member have a question for Michael at this time? Right, if not, we are going to allow the applicant, or the, I guess, the appealing, I'm not sure what the term is, but Ms. Tammy Hoover, who is appealing the decision, to speak, and you have 15 minutes for your appeal.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and fellow commissioners. First, I'm going to pass out to you the presentation that I'm going to show you tonight, as well as all the supporting documentation. It is quite a handful of papers, so that's why you're actually getting copies as well to help follow along. The first set of staple documents is the presentation itself, and everything else thereafter is all of the supporting documentation that I'll be going through. First, let me say, yes, I'm Tammy Hoover. I live at 75 Chafin Drive, which is immediately next door to the subject property we're discussing tonight, at 79 Chafin Drive. While I did personally file the appeal of the special use permit for this cell tower, I'm not only representing myself, I'm representing many of the residents that are around us that also oppose to the approval of this permit. I would like to just have everybody have a show of hands to let you know who is here tonight in opposition of the tower. The residents of Chafin Drive, Lost Forest Subdivision, Wedgefield Subdivision, Pebblebrook Subdivision, and Wauken Glen Subdivision, and Kellytown Road object to, our objective tonight is to show the board why the special use permit for the subject tower should be denied, based on T-Mobile has provided inaccurate and deceptive information. This tower does not comply with the Henry County zoning ordinance as it was in effect at the time that that permit was approved. This tower would endanger the health and welfare of the surrounding residents. This tower would have the effect of diminishing property values and resale values, and most of all, T-Mobile has not met the burden of proof that there is a need for this tower. The information that I'll be sharing with you tonight will be presented in both the macro and micro perspective of the effective residence. The information is based on tangible and verifiable factors that will meet the substantial evidence requirement for denial under the Telecommunications Act of 96. And we're here tonight mostly due to the fear of the lack of local authority that the TCA of 96 provides. We will provide proof of previous cases of denied towers that have gone before the Court of Appellants, and they were upheld. The local board's decision to overturn the approval of WCFs for wireless communication facilities. I'll start with actually going over what the Telecommunications Act of 96 does state, specifically Section 704, which addresses wireless communication specifically. On February 8 of 96, President Clinton signed into law the Federal Telecommunications Act of 96. This act was an expansive legislation designed primarily to increase competition in the telecommunications industry. The legislative history of the act evidences this competitive objective. The managers on the part of the House and the Senate intend to provide for a pro-competitive, deregulatory, national policy framework designed to accelerate rapidly private sector deployment of advanced telecommunications and information technologies and services to all Americans by opening ultimately telecommunication markets to competition. In fact, the House report articulates that the enormous benefit to American businesses and consumers from lifting the shackles of monopoly regulation will almost certainly earn the Telecommunications Act the distinction of being the most deregulatory bill in history. So, in summary, in essence, this bill was designed to promote competition among telecommunications companies, so that it would be affordable to all citizens. Now, under the Telecommunications Act of 96, it also states that without completely preempting the authority of local governments to make decisions regarding the placement of the WCFs, there are five things in which the local zoning boards have to uphold, and those are that they cannot discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services, that they cannot have the effect of prohibiting personal wireless services, and they have to act upon applications within a reasonable period of time after their request is duly filed, and they cannot deny wireless applications based on environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, and they cannot, in any denial, would have to be in writing and supported by substantial evidence contained in a written record. We feel that T-Mobile has provided inaccurate and deceptive information. And I will first start with the initial application package that T-Mobile presented with the letter, the dishuddled radio frequency engineer site analysis. When they first submitted their application, and this document is dated June 1 of '09, part of this application stated that their coverage was to cover the Kellytown Road, Wedgefield Drive, and Chafin Drive area, and this is on page two. In the preferred location section of this document, they also stated that the desired height of this tower, I don't know that you can see this very well, but I'm sure you guys have a copy there, that the height of the tower needed was 180 feet, and their RF engineer in this letter certifies that no shorter height of antenna would do, that it would make this, their coverage of their network ineligible. On the next page is actually where their statement says, is that a lower height would not provide adequate service. Not only did they submit this application saying that they needed this 180-foot tower to fill in a gap of in-building coverage, that they needed it to meet the FCC requirements for E91 services. In response to the town hall meetings that we had on August 6 and on August 20, T-Mobile submitted new plans lowering the tower height actually to 153 feet in the same location. Based on the previous statement of their certified RF engineer, Dinesh Bhutani, this height would not work in their first statement to the county. So, our question is, why would this height work? Why would the reduced height now work if it originally, he certified that it would, 180 height, 180 feet height was required? At the lower height of 153 feet, then we also believe that this opens up other eligible sites by T-Mobile's admission. The current tower on Kellytown Road, that is owned by AT&amp;T, would allow for 170-foot co-location antenna, that's also in that same original document, that they're, based on their engineer statement. Two other sites that were identified in their search ring would allow for 153 feet and 130 feet respectively, which they had said were ineligible due to the fact that they could not contain the 180 feet as originally needed. In the, an updated, an updated affidavit by the same RF engineer, which was submitted 10 of '09, now the objective was to provide in-building coverage to residents from Asa Mosley to Airline Road. We feel like that this information was provided, once we were asked, once we were asking them, what other sites had they considered, and why was there a need for a tower at this particular site, that they created this very limited search ring. No new propagation maps have been submitted with the new antenna height to justify the lower height of the antenna that they were able to come back with. So, I guess we all questioned, then how can we trust anything else that they've submitted Why does T-Mobile really want this tower? Well, back when they submitted their application as required by the zoning law, they sent out a certified letter to the adjoining property owners, which copies attached that I received. In this letter, it says, "Due to the high demand and lack of appropriate wireless connectivity in your immediate area, T-Mobile is expanding its network in your vicinity. This expansion will also provide other carriers the ability to piggyback off of T-Mobile's facilities to increase their service level as well." Well, that statement never actually says that it's a lack of T-Mobile coverage. It's quite ambiguous. The real reason why we feel like that T-Mobile wants this tower, they have a separate company called T-Mobile Towers. It is a division of the T-Mobile USA family. This is directly from their website. It says, "They offer wireless infrastructure for co-location across the U.S. and Puerto Rico. They have over 7,000 sites, the fourth-largest tower portfolio in the company, in the country, I'm sorry. They are in business to provide towers for immediate co-location to other providers for a fee, and towers are assets." As far as their E91, E911 requirements, a cellphone with an operating battery will connect to any cell tower as long as that phone has service, I mean, even without a service contract. And the Kellytown area already has 12 towers within a four-mile radius. T-Mobile has an approved application for another tower that's actually on Kellytown Road, that would make the total of 13, even without the Chafin Drive location. Road that would make the total of 13 even without the Chafin Drive location. We do not feel like the T-Mobile tower complies with the zoning ordinances. A moratorium was placed on the new WCF applications to rewrite. The new ordinance was passed and published in November of '09 that would prevent this actual tower from being approved in its entire capacity. This in itself is evidence that our zoning board and commissioners recognize that this tower is an issue to our community and do not believe the spirit of the ordinances would allow approval. We believe that the planning and zoning approval of the special use permit only focused on the fall zone and the setback requirements of the code that would have allowed for this tower to be approved and not all of the other zoning requirements under the WCS previous code. To start with, the preamble and enactment of the zoning code says, "Pursuant to the authority conferred by House Bill Number 51, amending Title 36 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated to include Chapter 66, known as the zoning procedure law, and for several purposes of promoting the health, safety, aesthetics, convenience, order, prosperity, and general welfare of the present and future inhabitants of Henry County, serving or securing safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, protecting property against blight and depreciation, encouraging the most appropriate use of land, buildings, and other structures throughout Under the old zoning ordinance, Section 3-7-228.1, the goals of the article are to, number one, encourage the location of WCFs in non-residential areas and minimize the total number of towers throughout the community. As previously stated, there are already 14 towers within a four-mile radius. T-Mobile owns or has antennas on six of those towers. There are three towers within a two-mile radius, and T-Mobile already owns or has antenna on two of those three towers even by their own RF engineer statement. And in actuality, the three towers that are listed within a two-mile radius, if you Google those, they actually show up within less than a mile and a half. The property that this tower is proposed has six adjoining property owners, all of which are used as home sites. Four of these properties are part of two subdivisions, being Lost Forest and Wedgefield. All but two of the properties besides the subject property are one-acre residential home sites. The subject property is the only property that has horses in addition to the actual home site. Attached now, I'm showing you the site plan for the tower on the subject property. And you will see all of the adjoining properties and how close that this tower actually sits to all of the adjoining property owners. My property is the property that would appear to be to the left of it, and I'm 256 feet from where this tower would be located. There's no tree line buffer between the site of my house to this tower because my property actually used to originally be part of the horse pasture originally owned by the owner of 79 Chafin Drive. Ironically enough, when I bought my property from her, there were protective covenants placed in the deed to restrict the type and size of home that I could build to help protect the integrity of the neighborhood. The two subdivisions that have lots backing up to this property are also protected with restrictive covenants to help, again, and to uphold the integrity of those communities and to help neighbors, protect one neighbor against the other from any blight or devaluation of their property.
Because we're about to run out of time, and ask if I could get a motion if it's at the board's pleasure to extend your time an additional five minutes.
Can I have a motion to extend your time five minutes?
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bazler and a second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor, motion carries five zero.
Thank you. The next ordinance that we feel like is in violation says to encourage co-location of site sharing of new and existing WCFs. There are three towers within a two-mile radius, and T-Mobile's on two of them. So we really, again, wonder why they even need this tower. The original application stated they could not co-locate on the tower 1.2 miles from the subject property, which is one owned by AT&amp;T, because it only allowed for the antenna height at 170 feet. It would not work. Now that they're able to reduce the height of the antenna at the subject property to 153 feet, again, we would ask why would the co-location option on the AT&amp;T tower not be a viable option? We honestly feel like that the reason that they have chosen not to co-locate on that tower is because it would interfere with an additional application, an approval that they have received for a tower that's on the Kellytown Road that would be 2.25 miles from the existing tower currently owned by AT&amp;T. The next ordinance also encouraged users of towers and antennas to configure them in a way that harmonizes the visual impact of the towers and antennas with the existing natural and/or built environment. Again, I've got the picture of the plaque there, and you can see on paper, even though I'm 263 feet from the tower and there's neighbors to the far side of me that's only 147 feet of this tower, with the tower still being 153 feet tall, and the property owners to the east would be 196 feet, we've kind of put together our own visual impact study for you since our code didn't currently require it, to give you an idea of what this view looks like from some of our backyards. This first picture is actually a picture taken off of my back porch. The tower, you can see a few of the pink flags indicating the location of where the tower would go. But if you see the white fence to your right, the tower would be located to the immediate left of it. This is a picture, again, actually literally taken out of my bedroom window that looks back over the couple-of-acre pasture site where the tower will go. The tower is going to be located or would be located directly behind my driveway. And this is, next picture is, again, what would presently be an oak tree now. Most of those would have to be removed in order to actually, to erect this tower. This was taken from the fence of the property line back towards the back of my house. As you can see, my house was built to be very open, and every window across the back of it opens up and would have you, direct view of this tower and a space station. Here's an opposed, there's pictures of my property before the tower and then after the tower to show what effect visually it would have, impact on my property. The homeowner that is located directly north of the subject property is the Nicholson property, and here's a picture with his property before the tower as his backyard looks now, and then once the tower is imposed. Here's another resident who lives in Wedgefield subdivision, who actually is across the street from the cul-de-sac that backs up to the subject property with, again, the tower superposed and what her view would look like. And then lastly, here is a picture of a, one of the residents who backed up to the property or adjoined the property from the Lost Forest subdivision, and this is their backyard view. Even as a monopine, this structure will stand at least 60 feet above the tallest tree. The tower is going in an open pasture with only a few of 100-year-old oak trees, and most of those would be removed to erect the tower. The proposed structure is a monopole with a base station. The base station is a 70 by 70 area that's an assembly of commercial-looking metal boxes surrounded by chain-linked fence and barbed wire. We do not have any commercial structures in our area. The Kellytown Mart, which is a gas station that is located approximately a one and a half miles from the subject property, is the only commercial venue within a 10-mile radius. Each of us bought our homes in this area because of the residential or rural view that the Kellytown area provides. The tower would diminish our expectations of this view. People in Lost Forest, Pebblebrook, and Watkins Glen paid a premium for their lots to have underground utilities. These subdivisions have restrictive covenants, as I previously stated. The last ordinance is to facilitate the use of public property and structures for the WCF. If a tower were shown to be needed, which we believe there is not, then there is land owned by both the Board of Education and the county that's just at the end of Chafin Road and Owen Drive.
Ms. Hoover, your time has expired, and at this time, I will open the floor up for board members who may have some questions.
And I apologize, I was actually told I had 30 minutes tonight, so that's kind of what I've prepared to present to you.
Well, this is, I think this is the first time we've had an appeal like this. So we're all kind of, kind of new at this, not sure how it was going to go. Do any board members have questions or comments that you'd like to make?
I do have quite a few questions, Madam Chair.
Mr. Bazler?
Bhutaney gave us this legal document to begin with, and I'm happy to, 1996, the Federal Telecommunications Act, and I understand that. But in saying that, and us not having an appeal, or towers being erected throughout our county, and now we're faced with one going in some backyards. The questions I have, of course, Ms. Hoover brought up the need for it. It's obvious, now, I'm not an appraiser. Commissioner Bowmanee is. The resale value would be something that I would be very interested in. I can't, I can't see where this would support any kind of resale value. One of the questions I've got, Michael, Ms. Harris, is that, is anyone here from the, from T-Mobile that may answer the question that we've changed the height? And now, in changing the height, first, I think the meetings, the town hall meetings was 180, whatever, 180 feet, now we're down to 153 feet. She raises a question that I'm not so sure that's been answered. In fact, that we stated that we needed 180 feet when we was in conference room B. Now we're talking about 153 feet. I have another question even more.
Mr. Bazler, should we see if there is a representative here?
That's a question that I would like to see how they address it. Before we do that, oh.
Okay, all right. Mr. Holm, we need to probably ask questions of Ms. Hoover first, and then the opposite.
This is just a thing that's running through my mind. I may be off of the protocol here, but that is, that is some of the things that I'm just, I'm sitting here writing this stuff down as she's presenting this, and that I know for a fact that we talked about 180 feet to start off with. At this point, I really have no questions for Ms. Hoover.
Can I add that as far as the need for this tower? While they stated that their purpose was to provide in-building coverage, that, one, the Telecommunications Act does not protect them or provide them with that right, it just says mobile service, and they have provided and included in your packages are the propagation maps that do show that they actually have coverage. But we also took a survey of the residents, and I've got, over, and I can tell you the exact numbers in a second, of the residents in the area to ask them, one, if they were opposed to it, two, if they were able to currently receive cellphone service inside their home and who their provider was. We also took a T-Mobile phone and went and did seven test calls on, of at least one resident on each street within these affected areas to prove that we were all able to receive in-home service even with a T-Mobile phone.
Is that information contained in the packet?
Here's the surveys themselves I was going to hand you, but the rest of that information is contained in there as far as the numbers and the results of these. And I'd also like to add that out of the 152 respondents, only two in this area said that they had T-Mobile service. So that was, again, a question is who are they actually trying to provide service to?
Is that the only copy that you have?
No.
Okay. That, though.
Does the board have any other documents that you would like the board to consider? If you will please give them all of the documents, since the record will be closed tonight.
They do have everything else except for those surveys. I just handed them.
Okay, thank you.
All right. At this time, I need to call for anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this cell tower. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor, this is your opportunity to come forward. You have 15 minutes, and if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson and fellow commissioners. My name is Frank.
Ms. Hoover, do you want to have a seat until he's finished? I know you've been standing up there a long time. We will, we can call you back.
My name is Frank Romeo. I represent T-Mobile out of Pat, out of Roswell, Georgia. I'm with Patrick Marshall and Associates. We are a consultant firm, consulting firm for T-Mobile. I don't want to tread back over the, all of the area that Mr. Harris spoke about, but just briefly want to come back to how we got here tonight and some of the due diligence that the former planning and director, Ray Gibson, had us do. Prior to granting the approval in December, we had two public informational meetings here in the annex discussing the process in which T-Mobile came to the Chafin Drive location, and also an opportunity for us to listen to the neighborhood and get their suggestions and listen to their opposition, and we expected that there would be some. As a result of the hearings, Ray Gibson asked that we do some additional studies for him. First study that he asked us to do was to go two miles in all directions of the proposed location, identify all the existing wireless facilities, and come back to him with a report of the available locations and the available heights at these locations, and to give him a reason in writing why they would or would not work. We did that. We contacted the owners of all the facilities and gave back to Mr. Gibson written statements as to what heights were available and why they would not provide the coverage we were looking to offer in the Chafin Drive corridor. Subsequent to that, then, Mr. Gibson asked us to provide affidavits from two of the departments. First, the Real Estate Department, the gentleman, Jesse McCoy, who couldn't be here tonight, as to why the Darwin property was preferable and why the other properties were less desirable in our target area. That report was given to Mr. Gibson, and it was used in making the approval. The second affidavit that was requested was from the RF engineer, the radio frequency engineer, a detailed analysis of why we chose the Darwin property and why we needed that location. Again, Mr. Gibson was given that report and used that report in making his decision. Prior to the final decision being made, we were contacted and told that in addition to the reports we had submitted, that there had been a meeting between Ms. Hoover and the planning director, and that there were some other suggestions made, and could we accommodate? Could we change the structure type to look like a tree? That email had a picture attached to it, which was a facsimile of the industry standard monopine. We agreed to that. Ms. Hoover asked that we build a brick wall around the base of the facility. Well, the facility's in the middle of a pasture. We didn't feel that a brick wall would be the right thing to do, but we did agree to put an enhanced landscape buffer around it, nine foot at the beginning of growth, to protect any view from her home of the, of the structures that would be at the base of the tower. So, we were also asked to move the access away from her property line and bring it around the north side of the house. We thought bringing the access around the north side of the house would remove too many trees, so we didn't agree to do that, but we did move the access so that it would incorporate the existing driveway. There'll be no existing, or there'll be no new development to access the site. We'll use the driveway, and then there'll be an 80-foot offshoot back to the site. I do want to challenge somewhat the comments about the number of trees that are going to be removed. There'll be two trees removed to access the site, and there'll be three more trees removed to actually build a compound and locate the tower. We will not, it sounded as if we were going to devastate the landscape back there, and that's absolutely not the case. You also saw some facsimiles of the site, of the tower structure, and those are a monopole, which is not the structure that we'll be doing. We will be doing a monopine just to set that record straight. There was also a request made to ensure that T-Mobile had a timely process in place to turn the generator off it should ever engage so that it wouldn't disrupt the neighborhood. There won't be a generator at the site. There was none on the plans, and it's not calling for one, so we didn't need to address that matter. And then again, and we do have an RF engineer here tonight who can address Mr. Bazler's question regarding... question regarding the height. In other words, why did we come in at a hundred and eighty feet, and then subsequently agree to lower it to a hundred and fifty? So Gary Alkon will speak to that matter. So, in brief, based on the additional supporting evidence that was required by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the county ordinance that was in effect at the time that this ord-, that these applications were filed, and the additional conditions that were placed on this application by Mr. Gibson on December 11th, we respectfully request that you approve the administrative approval from Mr. Gibson. I do want to just say one thing, I know that we caught you off-guard this year when we brought you six applications. Just to give you an idea of the breadth and the depth of what's happening in the industry, earlier in 2009, our company alone was given a hundred and ten target areas, just in metro Atlanta, hardly even scratching the surface of Georgia. They were ninety-five percent in residential areas, so this is not unique. Eleven were in Cherokee County, I believe eight were in Gwinnett County, we have some nine or ten sites in Forsyth County, so the issue we've got here tonight isn't new for me. I understand that you're seeing this for the first time, and I feel for you, these aren't easy decisions, but, you know, it is the, the trend that we're going in, and I don't hope that by any means anyone here feels that we slammed anything into Henry County and tried to get anything through on, on the, on the, on the low side. This is just where our license has brought us. We need to deliver in-building coverage to residents. So if there's any questions to the real estate side of things, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. Anything I can't answer for you, we'll see if Mr. Alkon can.
Madam Chair, I do have a question. You said you seeked other properties in the area that matched?
That's correct.
And no takers, or nothing in no open spaces? You felt like this would be the best suited for your tower, or was there no one else in, interested in you putting the tower on some of the open spaces that we have within several hundred yards of there, or did you talk to those folks?
Absolutely. Now, Mr. McCoy's not with us tonight, he is battling what, what is about to become possibly full-blown pneumonia, so he couldn't be here, but yes, other folks were approached, some, some denied him, and the details of what happened in that target area, and who he approached, and who turned him down are all in the real estate affidavit that was provided. Yes?
Provided?
To the Planning and Zoning Department as, as part of the additional information Mr. Gibson requested.
Okay. I hadn't seen that, I guess, there's, could be an opportunity to see that, that would be something that I would be willing to look, I would move to see on this.
We can ask staff to make note of that, because we'll have a time period in, in which to review all the information before we render a decision, so...
Yeah, we'll go back and we'll review our file, we don't, I don't know that we have that particular document. We do have some other locations that were considered, I don't know if it was stated what was, what took place as far as negotiations or, or comments from the adjacent property owners.
I know that for myself, I have talked into some of the property owners in the area myself to find out if they had been contacted, so I'd like to see what the report says.
We, I'll make sure that, 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 that copy that was sent, or a copy of what was sent to Mr. Gibson is forwarded to you.
Could you address the height change? That is something in my mind, I can't...
Right.
For, for some reason, I'm hung up on that.
Mr. Alkon, speak to the height change.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
Um, I believe that you guys wanted to address the issue that was brought up, the questions of why I'm a hundred, one hundred and eighty feet to a hundred and fifty feet, and why it was reduced. If I can give you an overall perspective on how sites are actually generated, we're very, very low-powered, we're regulated by FCC. We're the equivalents of probably a hundred, about, I would say, probably about twenty-four-hundred watts, totally what our, our cell sites put out. We, we're separated by how much each wattage does per radio, that's equivalent to about sixty watts, what's, about what you have in your house in a light bulb. We're regulated by what they call a link budget. A link budget's actually how the cell site communicates with the mobile, okay? Within there, there is consistently, without getting too technical, there are considered levels. Levels then are able, must sustain a level so that the phone can communicate with the cell tower. With those levels, we have to maintain a certain penetration strength. This is why we talked about, in this particular case, if you saw the maps, the maps showed a green color, a yellow color, and a gray color. Those were indicated by in-building, in-vehicle, and on-street coverage. With that, again, going back to the levels, in-building is a neg seventy-six, in-vehicle is a neg eighty-four, and a, on-street is neg ninety-four. What does that mean? Those are the levels that we can actually communicate being in that particular area. I'll give you an example, in order to be able to use your phone, which is an indication of a bar system on a, on a phone, that level would have to be a neg seventy-six, in order for that phone to communicate with that cell tower on the outside. As if you were in your car, it would have to be a neg eighty-four, in order to be able to communicate with that cell tower as well. On the street, the, the level would be a neg ninety-four. They do a link budget, as I stated earlier, the phone actually has a receive sensitivity, that means it can only tune up and tune down to a certain level. That link budget, in, in how the radios are designed, is actually about a one-hundred-and-two level. So at ninety-four, in order to be able to talk out on the street, since there is no obstruction of a house, a building, a car, metal, concrete, rebar, the signal can be weaker, so the establishment of that coverage can be more prominent. As you get in a car, you lose a certain level, because now you're penetrating through metal, and wherever the phone is being used, whether it's on the dashboard, whether it's underneath the car, by the seat, or if it's a wireless device. Again, in order to be able to get, to penetrate those values, we have to have those certain levels. The reason why we came down from a hundred and eighty to a hundred and fifty, that was a recommendation that we were given, to go to a hundred and fifty feet. Does it still provide us with some coverage? Yes, it does. Does it affect the penetration factor that we were originally looking for? Yes, it does. We still could live with a hundred and fifty feet of our penetration factor, not as well, but still be able to do some communications within the area. Currently, where we don't have any communications, we're experiencing troubles because that site is not currently there. It was brought up that there was numerous towers in a four-mile radius. Actually, I did some measurements today, and I took those, those distances as well. And the closest tower that I've got to this particular one is over a mile and a half, it's one-point-six-four miles, which is the site I have at one-ten Kellytown Road, Kellytown Road. The other one is just south, southeast of the proposed applic-, application, and it is one-point-six-two miles. Again, I talked about how much wattage it was, and how much the power is restricted by the link budget. These sites only communicate at about a distance of a mile in each direction. With the incorporation of high speed, I need a cleaner, more viable signal. Years ago, they used to put up analog. Analog was able, you could raise your voice level, it was actually able to carry until you lost the signal. With analog communicate, or digital communications, the signal's either there or not, it's not present. With RF being not constant, sometimes you experience that indication.
Everyone may know something for those who may be looking at the timer. Although the time has expired for those that are here in favor of the cellphone tower, the commission has the ability to continue asking questions beyond the extended time, and may indeed call Ms. Hoover back at some point for some additional questions, too, so I just wanted to, to clarify that.
Could you answer the council's question?
I'm sorry, sir, if you don't mind, it's not appropriate for comments from the audience, and the commissioner can ask for clarification if, if he does not understand what is being answered. Mr. Bazler?
I do, yeah, so what you're saying in a sense, we're going to have to have a cell tower every mile? Is that what we're getting, is that what we're coming to?
To provide in-building coverage, is you're going to need them about every mile and a half? Yes, sir.
I understand. Hold, hold on just a minute. You know, I'm not against cell towers, I've got two cell phones on me right now that's gone off, I don't know how many times since we've sat here. It's, it's a need in our society. But in nineteen ninety-six, when this act was imposed on the citizens of America, I don't know that they had this kind of action in mind. It's a deep concern to me when we've, have come to the point where we're going to put these things up like telephone poles. And, and I know what the law, the law states, and, and, and because of the severity of this, we have went back immediately and reconstructed our ordinance, and put a war torn on this till we could get our thoughts, because this is the first time, I've been on this board just over, I'm starting my fourth year, we've never seen nothing like this. I feel like we've, we've got our pants leg caught on our own pitchfork, because of, this thing has been out there, but yet it's been brought to our attention now, and we're faced with something that I'm seriously having an issue with it. Because when we impose something, it's not like, and, and I know there are other board members would probably like to speak, unlike a corner where it's designated commercial, or we know the one probably was going to build a house on that corner, so in, common sense would tell us that probably somebody would put a, a business there. We're talking about the imposing and, or intruding on folks' backyards, so I, I have issues with it, and when I look at this, I'm just...
Mr. Bazler, I, I may be speaking out of turn, and I'm going to look to the county attorney. This meeting is probably not the meeting in which to voice opposition, or to, to share, it is to gather information in order to, to consider all the evidence presented, and then come back and render a decision. Am I correct in that?
Um, I, I think both of you are somewhat correct. The, the board as a whole can comment on the evidence being provided tonight, and ask questions of interested parties. I would say that the final decision will be something that the full board will have to make that decision in public at a later time, I hope, if that's the motion that passes tonight. But I do think it is appropriate, if any board member wants to express concern as to what you're hearing tonight, or ask questions, but keep in mind that you will, as a full body, render a final decision, hopefully at a later date.
I just, I wanted to lean more to the side of caution, because whatever decision comes down from the board, I want to assure that it is not challenged procedurally, and since this is new, to make sure that we kind of follow everything by the letter, because we certainly don't want to go through another meeting like this, and don't want to put the citizens through that either, so...
That's right. I mean, each, each side has very important rights tonight, to be heard, and I would just, yeah, we are chartering uncharted territory, you know, waters here, we, we've not had this hearing before, and, and so, but I don't think anything right now has done anything to cause us concern as to a procedural challenge, Madam Chairman.
Will you stop us if you sense that happening?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I apologize if I was out of line in answering the questions that I'm concerned with, as well as the, some other folks as well.
Do you have some additional questions? I just want, as I said, I just wanted to make sure that we follow everything accordingly, since this is...
Yes, ma'am.
...is something new to us.
I'm good at this point.
Okay. Mr. Bowmanee?
I highlighted a number of things, and, one, the, I think the one-ten Kellytown, it's a mile and a half away, that's a, is that an AT&amp;T tower?
Uh, yes, we're actually co-located, actually, no, that's actually our role on monopole. We actually put this one in, and it is open to carriers, which I think eighteen...
Is that your tower?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay.
The, the one-ten Cali, Kellytown Road?
Yeah, right. And now, is that, what's the height on that tower?
Uh, that, that tower is a hundred and seventy-four feet.
So it, it, would it, well, you've already said a mile, but that's within a mile and a half, I'm, I'm assuming that's as to crow flies and not to...
Yes, sir, I measured it at one mile point six-four.
Okay, thank you, thank you. The, uh, the other thing you mentioned, that, at this particular site, it's in question, that there would not be a gen set at this site, is that, would it not ever be a gen set?
That is correct.
Or is it just at this time?
No, that, that is correct. We're trying to get away from generators in general. Usually, the reason we put a generator, particularly in a location, if it would be somewhere in a remote area on a mountain that we couldn't get to, usually we have battery backups that ask, that last almost, between about eight and fourteen hours on the average. So there is battery backup that the sites actually operate on until we can get a technician to the facility.
Is the, the, you, are you saying that as a whole, towers don't do it, or, or T-Mobile, T-Mobile's, that's their policy, is, because I know that on the same street that my office is on, I think it's SBC Towers, I believe is the, I mean, they've got a gen set and some other things out on the site, but it...
In areas where we're commercially, and there's other generators, like at building facilities and stuff like that, we generally will put a generator in, because then we'll use a priority list. What we'll do is we'll put a generator in the city area, where there's other generators putting in buildings where they're kicking out, they've lost power throughout the whole city, or something like that. And we'll use our priority to be in the rural areas where we can go out and get those up first, and then come back and, and where the generators will keep those on. But usually in residential areas, we do stay away from generators as well, sir. Yes, sir.
And you stated that you'd, well, I, I take this back, I don't know that you stated this, I'm just, this is a question. Did you attempt any co-location on any existing towers that would be reasonably in this range? I know we're talking a mile and a half, a mile whatever, but the co-location would not work on that, well, it wouldn't be a co-location, you're on the tower.
That is correct. As indicated earlier by the opposition, she indicated that two of the three radio towers located, T-Mobile currently is on, and that is correct. Based on those distances that I gave you, and base of the need, and the penetration factor issues, we are on two of those three. The other one that they exist in, and I'm not too sure where the AT&amp;T tower was located, I'm sure we addressed that originally in the tower locations. What happens is a case that most networks don't mimic another network. AT&amp;T's network's completely different than T-Mobile's network, as valuable as Sprint or Verizon. What they try to do is co-locate on them and have that same footprint put down on the ground. That's why originally, again, the height of the tower were usually required to allow for additional co-carriers, but in the same point, trying to meet the coverage objective to put the plot in. Picture a ring and ring technologically like the Olympic rings, we have to have certain overlap within the ring to the next ring, because that gives us a pattern of overlapping coverage, seamless handoff, and of course, the ability to handoff within the area without dropping calls.
Okay, one more question, and I'll be done. In reference to the height, does the height of the tower have, it, let me, an example, if you put a hundred and eighty-foot tower at another location close in proximity to this, would it have the same effect as a hundred and fifty-three-foot tower? A hundred and fifty-foot tower?
No.
So the height of the tower has no effect on the coverage distance?
Yes, it does, but let me explain, it's twofold, actually, and I hope I'm interpreting your question correctly.
Okay.
It, it's like, take, picture a fat flashlight against your hand, and raise the flashlight above your hand. That enab- That enables the flashlight signal or the light to actually expand. The higher you get, you see the expansion. Well, with radio communications, even though that expands to a wider area, so the taller it gets, after a certain distance, after a certain height, because the mobile cannot tune up to it, it has to be within that link budget, as I explained earlier. If it doesn't do that, then the radius can only be so far before it doesn't communicate anywhere.
Because it loses RF gain, is that...
That's correct. Or the signals are so weak at that point, they cannot communicate with the mobile. And so it's a twofold to the aspect, to the aspect of what the cell radius is on the far end, based on what it is underneath.
Okay.
So 150 underneath would be the same signal strength as 180 underneath, but it wouldn't be at the far end cell.
Okay, that's all I have.
Does any board member have a question of either T-Mobile or Ms. Hoover?
Madam Chair, I have another question.
Mr. Bazler?
On the locations, I would like to know specifically what locations, other locations was, was looked at. Now, that's in the file, wherever it may be. It appears to me that we're going to, that, that we're going to have to render a decision at a later date. If, if, if that's the case, if I'm understanding this right, I would like to have that. If we've got it now, I would like to see it. If not, that would be something that I think that we would like to see. I have one, one other thing as well.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hoover, reference to a, the, the tower company, putting up towers to service other companies, is that, is this, is that, was she on the money with that, or?
No, but within many municipalities that we've gone through, in many other states, many other areas, New York City, all the way down the eastern seaboard to Florida, usually when we build a monopole, to limit the amount of structures that we put up and any other carriers putting up within, within the area, we are almost, well, it's highly recommended and almost ordered that we look at those towers to make sure that we can't coexist on those particular towers. So sometimes they ask us, if you're looking at 100 feet, could you build at 180 to get another carrier on there? Could you...
This tower would be specifically for T-Mobile?
Yes, sir, at 150 feet. Now, if a carrier of AT&amp;T or Sprint could use that tower at 110 feet, they would opt to do a co-location with us as well on that tower if it was available.
Okay, I understand.
Commissioner Bazler, reference to your question, this is what was provided along with some of the other documents from PMNA and the applicant when they submitted. It does show a map of some of the other locations. Again, this is part of the file, submit this as part of the file for, for record. They also submitted some, a letter yesterday that we'll send to the, we'll give to the county clerk to make sure that's a part of the record, but it denotes a few of the parcels and some of the, the notes saying that certain parcels were, they noted as being too narrow. And again, back to the questions previously, in this document, it doesn't address specifically that who, who were notified, it specifically does call out what properties were considered. So that, that's what the, I think they made reference that, that there's a list of, of residents that were actually notified. What this does provide is that there were certain locations that they did consider for an additional site, and that this identifies that.
Any other questions, Mr. Stady?
Michael, do you actually have a picture of the tower we're talking about? Because I think that she showed one tower and the gentleman's saying there's another tower. Do you have a picture of that specific tower?
Before I do?
That was the picture that was sent in with the email. That's not, that's not reflective of what we would be putting in. That's, I can't tell the height of that.
Okay. Okay. You want to kind of explain?
Put that on the screen for me, please.
Sure.
I'll explain what that is. Their rendering is in the plan.
Okay.
Okay. This is a, this is the attachment that was sent via email to myself of what Ms. Hoover was suggesting we change the structure to. I, I just want to say that may not exactly reflect what we were going to do. I don't know how tall that, that structure is, is that a 110-foot tower, 90-foot tower? I don't know, but that is a, a picture of a monopine. Again, not representing that that's what we would be putting up there.
Did you say your background was real estate?
That's correct. That's, I've been in, in this telecommunications, real estate arena for 10 years now.
This is a fact-finding mission for us tonight, so I need to just, I'm going to ask you a question. I think I know the answer, but in the past, what is your perception of these cell towers having a positive impact on property values or a negative impact on property values?
That is, that's a question that's come up frequently and we can provide, I realize it's, it may not be in a timely manner, but we do have studies that we've commissioned here in Atlanta for exactly that question, to see the effect on resale values, depreciation over time and, and how they have compared to other homesteads. So, and, and we found that the, the effect is, is not there.[948.23][948.23](Laughter).
Okay, I'm just, just asking a question, because in Ms. Hoover's work in exhibit number M, there's a, there's a question in the back. It took me a minute, Ms. Hoover, to find the example, but there is an example on would you buy a house or a cell tower? And they did a poll and that poll wasn't very favorable. Just a fact-finding mission, just going to ask the question.
I understand.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Bowman?
Well, along that vein, that, I'm a state certified real estate appraiser also, so I think there's two things that happen when there's a cell tower in place, in a residential area or behind a property or home. There's the, always the thought of if you've got two similar homes and they're similar in price, size, age, design, appeal, you can name all of those little appraisal quotes. Generally, the house that has the tower will not sell near as quick as the house that does, that, or, I've seen this in more in, in, you know, power lines and that sort, when I understand there's a lot of difference in, in a high-power line than this, and I understand this is low voltage and that sort of thing, but there's still, there still are those variances. As an appraiser, an underwriter will require me to put that in my report. Now, there's a number of things you have to put in your report, high tension, cell towers, trains, anything, but anything that would have an, a appearance of an adverse effect on the property value. So I would, I would say that it would be my opinion that it would have an adverse effect on, say, Ms. Hoover's property. Just look, I've been over there and I've driven, okay, and I've looked around that area. Some of the others it may not, because it may not come as, as in the view. But I would say that it's, in my professional opinion as a certified appraiser, that it would have an adverse effect on the property value. And there again, that's just my opinion, so...
Any other questions or comments, either for Ms. Hoover or from the T-Mobile representatives? All right, if not, this is, and you gentlemen may have a seat. This is an appeal hearing and so no decision can be rendered this evening. The facts... The facts have been presented tonight and the board will take that information and we will consider all of that and render a written report at a specific time. We have two dates and I will look for a motion from someone on the board to make a motion. The two dates that we have coming up in which to render that decision will be March the 2nd at 9:00 a.m. or March 16th at 6:30 p.m.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we table and defer a decision on the cell tower application appeal until March the 2nd. For the Board of Commissioners' regular public meeting, that would give us an opportunity to put all the information, I mean, we've gotten, we've gotten a lot of information to look at, and to be able to look into everything and be able, and to be able to render a decision at that time.
We have a motion on the floor for tabling this item for decision to March the 2nd at 9:00 a.m. by Mr. Bowman, and I'll entertain a second on that. Second by Mr. Jeffries, all in favor?
I would comment. At that time, we render the, the judgment of the hearing that we're having tonight. Will, is there any more public comment at that point?
Um, no, you do not have to have public comment, nor is that a public hearing required at that time. It will be for decision only. And I think as part of the, the record tonight, what will be before the board in the ensuing time period will be the information you've been provided with tonight, the original application that staff has relied upon and provided to y'all in your books, as well as, you know, the comments that you've heard, the verbal comments that you've heard and the answers to your questions. So that will comprise the record that the board will render its decisions. As part of the record too, that's been provided to you by staff, you have the old ordinance and its provisions, so that will be your record.
All right, I believe Mr. Bowman would like to amend his motion.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. In view of the fact that it's a nine o'clock meeting, I, I understand there's a lot of people that probably are working, can't be here, I'd like to make, I'd like to amend my motion to change that to the March 16th, the 6:30 meeting, and that way it would, it would allow, it'd give us a little bit more time, and I think that's good. And it would also allow for the, the people to be present.
Mr. Jeffries, would you amend your second?
I would.
All right, so we have a motion to bring that back before the board on March the 16th at 6:30 p.m. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. And one other thing I, I do want to remind everyone is that we ask that all interested parties please refrain from sending emails or calling to lobby their decisions as the board's decision can only be based upon the evidence that is in, has been presented into the record tonight. And we will, if, Jeremy, if you could wait just a minute, if there are those who wish to leave the meeting at this time, if you were here for that item and, and you do not want to be here for the remainder of the agenda, we'll give you a few moments to clear the room. And we will take a two-minute recess. We need to bring the meeting back to order. And at this time, we're going to move on in the agenda to a rezoning request, and that's RZ-09-13. Willie Hale of McDonough, Georgia, requests a rezoning from C-2 general commercial to C-3 highway commercial for property located at 2620 Highway 81 East. The property consists of 1.354 plus or minus acres and is located within Commission District 1. Our presenter is Jeremy Gilbert, Planner 1, Exhibit 10 in your book. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Board members. The request that is before you tonight is a rezoning from C-2 to C-3 for property located at 2620 Highway 81 East. It's approximately 1.34, 354 plus or minus acres, and the applicant is requesting the C-3 zoning district for the purpose of a used car lot. The property currently has an existing single-family building and a block building, which both buildings are to be utilized as part of the used car lot. This request was heard by the Board of Commissioners on Aug., or, this, a rezoning was heard by the Board of Commissioners on August 19th of 2008, where this property was rezoned from RA to C-2 with eight conditions. It also received a variance from the Zonin Advisory Board for the minimum lot size within the watershed protection district, and this request was, this rezoning request was heard by the Zonin Advisory Board on January 14th, 2010, and was recommended for approval with eight conditions. One of those conditions being for the C-3 zoning district, but only for uses of C-1 and C-2 or used car lots. And I will answer any questions that the Board may have.
Does any Board member have a question for staff on this item? If not, at this time, I'd like to call for the applicant or their representative, and if you would step to the podium, state your name for the record. We'll give you 15 minutes to add any additional information that you would like for us to have. Good evening.
My name's Willie Hale. Good evening, Board members. We, as Jeremy stated, we'd like to rezone this to a C-3 for used car lot only, keeping the C-1 and C-2 uses. And as the recommendations show, we're willing to put the exterior lighting in as requested. We're willing to put the dumpsters in. We, we would like to discuss number four item, the decorative fencing. We would like to have that omitted. We think that's a little bit tough on us to do that fence all the way around that piece of property, so we'd like to discuss that with you and see if we could get that knocked out. Number five, the entrance of the development is, has been approved by the Georgia Department of Transportation. We have all of our easement, radius easements and everything in order, and we have a permit from the Georgia Department of Transportation already. We're willing to and ready to go ahead if approved. We're going to use the same existing buildings, the residence that's on there, for the office of the used car lot. And we, we ask that we keep the, the buffers. We had no buffers on it in the C-2 zoning. Would like to stick with that. We will be putting a small wrought iron type fence in the front with the sign with a gate that rolls parallel with the fence, so that it doesn't get in the way of entry or outlet. I think this is a good situation to, to present, because it seems to me it's a lot better to use this as a small used car lot than what we had originally planned, because it, the impervious area, we were taking a lot of it up with putting a large building in before. And when that particular contract fell through, we're, we've got a lot, lot less blacktop on the lot, probably 30% of what we would have had before. So it leaves us better for water situation, and runoff will be a lot less than it would have been with the other program.
Does any Board member have a question for the applicant?
No, Shay, I'd like to reserve my questions for Mr. Hale and also for Mr. Gilbert until the opposition has an opportunity to present their side.
All right, any other Board members with a question at this time for the applicant? At this time, thank you, you can be seated. And at this time, if there is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to this request, we would ask you to step to the podium at this time and state your name and address for the record. Opposition will have 15 minutes. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Is there anyone in the audience then who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Mr. Hale, if you could come back?
Okay, Mr. Gilbert, while Mr. Hale is making his way back. The question on condition four, can you give me an example of, of any other business along Highway 81 East that is currently required to have a decorative fence constructed of wood, stone, masonry, or wrought iron around the existing buildings?
In this particular area, I can't name any other property that has a requirement to fence the entire perimeter of their property.
Okay. And Mr. Hale, as far as the buffers are concerned, and Mr. Gilbert, correct me if I'm wrong. On the west side of the subject property is, is a transmission line, and that's the reason it was not required in the previous zoning hearing. On the north side is Highway 81. On the east side is Henry County Feed Mill, and on the south side is residential. And that would be the only side of that property that would require buffering, and that's the way it was when it was C-2. Is that not correct?
That is correct. It was conditioned at that time to not require a buffer along the west, north, and east property lines, based on the uses and the easement, but only to require the buffer along the southern property line.
That is correct. And if I need to make that as far, as a condition, because I don't see, I don't know, does it change by going from two to three?
Correct. The recommendation when it went from staff to the Zonin Advisory Board was to maintain that condition, and the Zonin Advisory Board modified that condition to read as number four in your executive summary reads tonight. But if it is the desire of the Board to change it back to the previous number four or to a modified version, that can be done.
It is in the executive summary, but it's not in the conditions. It's part of the resolution that we're about to approve.
Correct. It, it is a, could be modified. The condition in the resolution was what the Zonin Advisory Board recommended. If it's the pleasure of the Board to modify that condition, it could swap the language from the previous number four to the new number four.
Well, I can assure you, my motion will include that. That previous number four actually is, we're going to make condition number nine, because number four will be modified as well. Okay. Was there a problem, question?
Do you say anything?
Shay, do you need clarification of that?
There will be another name. I'm going to give it to you.
The, the only question that came up, and I understand your concern with the current uses that are already on the property, but the Unified Land Development Code requires that certain buffers be in place based on the current zoning of the property. If you do choose to condition them to eliminate that buffer, then I think the proper channels would be through a variance, because you're, you're going to allow them to reduce a buffer that's required by the ordinance. Just point of information.
Okay, but, excuse me. This piece of property was zoned, and I understand it was prior to the ULDC, correct?
That's correct.
And that's what's triggering this?
Right, because they are changing their zoning from C-2 to C-3.
Okay, so I need to, Mr. Hale's going to have to go back and get a variance then from ZAB.
Unless the county attorney differs with my interpretation of the ordinance.
I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, tell them.
I was the question, okay.
Explain it.
Mr. Hale's request is to eliminate the buffer requirement that is now a requirement of the Unified Land Development Code. Understand that the adjacent properties would not be intrusive-type uses, except for the residential on the southern property line. But because the ordinance requires a buffer, then I think the proper channels would be to apply for a variance to eliminate those buffers and not do it through a condition of zoning, because that is a requirement of the ordinance.
I do think that the Board, this Board has, certainly if, if staff has the right to grant variances through our code, this Board, as part of this zoning condition, could impose conditions that vary from that, if, if you like, if that's the Board's desire in this proceeding. That is my opinion of that.
Okay, let me ask, let me ask a question, Sherry, or Jeremy. The ULDC requires a buffer between two commercial properties, is that correct?
It, it requires the buffer between the residential and the commercial.
There's only one residential, that's my point, it's to the south. Look to the east, and that's Henry County Feed Mill. Whether you, whether you call it commercial or not, I know there's someone here in the audience tonight that can go back and verify how long that's been commercial.
And, and you're absolutely right, but the land use maybe differ from the current zoning. The current zoning is residential agricultural. The use is that of a commercial business.
It's been a feed mill since 1960 or '59, but yet just simply because it hasn't been through the process, it's not commercial property.
It is not commercially zoned.
And I can understand why people get so upset when they come to deal with us. And I sit here and approve some of this, too, and I'm not taking anything away from myself, but ladies and gentlemen, there has to be some common sense fact to put into this. And on the west side of the subject property is a transmission line that's either, I think, 80 or 100-foot right-of-way or easement. Absolutely nothing can be built there under the power line. Okay, so what I need to do is to condition number four, and you're saying we can grant a variance if the Board approves it, is that correct?
If you want to condition and take that, strike that condition or modify that proposed condition number four, you can do that. Is it your intent, Commissioner Holder, to just do away with number four altogether?
My, my intent is to put the previous condition number four, which was in our executive summary and was not part of the number four, or it was not even a part of the conditions in our resolution that we're about to adopt or deny or whatever.
I see, I see.
You see where I'm coming from?
Wouldn't this have to be advertised as a rezoning and a variance together? It's only advertised as a rezoning, there was no variance.
I understand.
Advertised.
Administrative variances are advertised. Madam Chairman, administrative variances are not advertised.
Okay, is this, is this?
That's not an administrative variance, is it? That would have to go to the Zonin Advisory Board.
That is correct. It would not, I would not have the authority to do an administrative variance, unless it was going to be a reduction to the buffer with a fence.
In the absence of condition number four being, if that were removed from tonight's resolution, the impact on a zoning action taken tonight would be that the terms of the ULDC would prevail, correct?
That is correct, but I think we need clarification. If you look at the executive summary, there's a condition number four. And then if you look at the resolution, there's a totally different condition number four.
Said I needed to make condition number nine, because.
And, and I think the confusion is that was the original condition that was placed on the property when it was rezoned to C-2.
Which in the previous number four is the one that I'm referring to that I would add in, or if I need to do whatever I need to do. Because number four will remain, but I'm going to modify number four.
Can we hear your mod, let's just hear your modification, maybe that'll help us a little bit.
All right. The modification to number four is going to read, "The fence and landscaping shall be approved by the Director of Planning and Zoning." As far as a decorative fence that can't be in excess of eight feet in height and has to be wood, stone, masonry, or wrought, wrought iron, no, that's, I'm not putting that as part of it. My condition number four will read, "The fence," which Mr. Hale has agreed to, "along the frontage of the property with a slide gate." Is that not correct, Ms. Hale? That would include, and that would, one sentence would be, "The fence and landscaping shall be approved by the Director of Planning and Zoning." That will be condition number four. And if you're telling me I can do it, and I question whether we can do this or not, but if you're telling me we can do it.
You're removing the condition on the decorative fence and just having the second sentence of number four.
Right.
That's on that proposed resolution.
That's what I'm proposing.
And the executive summary, the condition number four that's in, in the executive summary, that is the current condition on that property?
Based on the C-2 zoning, but they are requesting C-3.
So the question is, should it have come through as a request to go from C-2 to C-3 and a variance for the buffer requirement? It should have come through the process, the variance would have probably been handled at the P and Z, and then the zoning would have come on to the Board, but the variance would have been handled at the P and Z meeting, is that correct?
That is correct, because variances go directly to the Zonin Advisory Board.
Yeah, because if, if this issue of a variance had come up, they could have addressed it at the same time. ZAB gave us the eight conditions that we have currently, correct?
Well, you still would have had to.
It would have been two separate.
It would have been two separate.
But at the same time.
Yes, sir.
Simultaneously.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Mr. Hale, I guess I ask you a question. If we have to go back through the process to get a variance for the buffers. If we have to go back through the process to get a variance for the buffers on the south side, are you willing to do that and delay this? Or do you want to go and do the buffers on all four sides?
How long are you talking about?
It's probably gonna take 30 days because there's a 15-day advertising. Is that not correct?
That's correct. We could get him on the March agenda for the zoning advisory board and then followed up by an April agenda before the board. That being the latter, April beating before the board.
You can't get him back on March the 16th? That's a month away.
Well, the variance would only go before the zoning advisory board.
Correct.
My thinking is because they placed the condition, I don't know that they're gonna make a motion to grant the variance. So then it would be appeal back to the board. Now, if the zoning advisory board approves the variance, then it's, he's finished, and then we can schedule the rezoning for the March 16th, BOC.
All right, let me ask you another question. If we approve the zoning tonight and he goes back for a variance and they deny him, then he, I guess he has an option to appeal the variance, the denial of a variance, or he can comply and move on, correct?
That is correct, and what you also could do is approve the rezoning tonight, and then the applicant could submit an application for a variance. Again, what you've just stated, if the zoning advisory board denies that, he can appeal it, and then if you all uphold the denial, then Mr. Hale could proceed with submitting his plans. I could still give an administrative waiver, which would reduce the buffer from 40 to 20 with a fence. So that could be handled administratively.
That's the simplest thing to do, I believe, Mr. Hale. And then that will get you back at the March zoning advisory board meeting for them to hear your appeal. I mean, yes, I mean, your variance request, excuse me, your variance request. Now, there's no assurance that they will approve it, uphold it, whatever. We don't know that. But at least you can get through with the zoning part of it tonight.
Okay, I understand it.
We can, we can vote on approval or disapproval of the zoning tonight.
That's correct.
Then if we, if we get the zoning, we can go ahead and start with the planning and development, our plans, get that started. We can put in for a variance on number four to take away all that fence because it's commercial property to commercial property.
You're talking about not the fence then, Mr. Hale, but the buffer?
Just the buffer.
The buffer.
Yeah, yeah, eliminate the buffers.
That's correct.
Now, is there any way to do away with the fence?
Well, I'm gonna take care of that in my, I'm saying I'm gonna take care of that. That's what I'm gonna propose.
If we can get a vote on zoning, well, we could go ahead and get some stuff going because of time.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know if you can get things going until after the variance is heard.
And you're absolutely correct. Once you submit your plans to development plan review, they're gonna be looking for the buffer to be on the set of plans. So they will redline your plans based on you not showing that buffer. And because they have a 10-day turnaround on plans, they can't hold your plans up to wait on the variance.
I understand. Okay. Could we go ahead then and go ahead with the Georgia Department of Transportation and be putting in our driveway?
No, sir.
We're stopped work.
Yes, you would need to wait until you have the plans approved unless, Terry, I don't think that you can proceed with that until you have the plans approved.
For the applicant in his best interest would be to bring it all back at one time. I'm not sure if there was concern voiced at the ZAB hearing about these. Had you seen condition number four before, or was that something that you just noticed tonight, which would have, had it been voiced perhaps, that could have been addressed. So I apologize for that inconvenience, but it does seem to be in your best interest to have it all done at one time and have the board perhaps table your rezoning until the March 16th hearing, if that's possible, time-wise. And that way you'll have one approval that covers all of your concerns, and you won't have to come back, and you won't be stalled in any of your efforts. But that's, I think Commissioner Holder has given you the options to sort of tell him what you'd like to do.
If we could do it on March 16th, I think Mr. Hale's willing to do that, but we're talking about April now.
We can do rezoning requests on March 16th, but if he's going to apply for a variance, and if the variance is not approved, then that would not give us ample amount of time to get it on March 16th because the meeting would have, would not have been held. So you can actually act on the rezoning tonight, or you can hold off on acting on the rezoning pending the outcome of the variance.
What is the date of the zoning advisory board meeting?
March 11th.
March 11th. Can you not advertise the variance for the zoning advisory board meeting and the board of commissioner meeting at the same time, just to, just in case it doesn't pass, then it's already advertised for our board meeting on the 16th?
Right, but what I would have to advertise is the denial of a variance. So the applicant would be actually filing an appeal to the denial of the variance.
I would probably encourage him to go ahead and advertise it that way because I have a feeling that's the way it'll play out, and if it's an appeal, we'll have to overturn the denial.
And if it's not, then we address it.
Can't advertise the appeals of a decision that's yet to be made, but what you could do is if the March 6, in March 11th ZAB hearing ends up in a denial of the request, then the March 16th rezoning action can be tabled. You can always table that again and bring it to a later date when the appeal can be heard at the same time. So that's, procedurally, that's how you should go.
Do it one more time.
If the March 11th zoning advisory board hearing results in a denial of the variance, then the March 16th rezoning matter can be pushed back even farther to April to allow for the appeal of the variance denial and the rezoning action to be heard at the same time at the April meeting. However, if the March 11th zoning advisory board decision results in a granting of the variance, then the March 16th rezoning can still be heard by this board, and the variance issue will have already been resolved.
Okay, let's go to, you're gonna address four. Now, we're talking about the buffers. Okay, if we, if we leave the buffers, what are we putting on the buffers here to approve, to get it voted on tonight?
Forty foot or 20 foot?
With the fence.
Completely around it?
The southern property line. Just where you, well, it would be around the southern, southeastern, western.
Three sides?
Yes, sir.
How much?
20, I can do it administratively with 20 feet and a fence.
Or 40 foot and a planted.
Let's go ahead and go for that with a 20-foot buffer with some type of, some type of wrought iron fence or something we can get up.
Security fence. Okay, well, in that case, in doing that, then you're just going with the conditions as presented, with the eight conditions as presented?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion. I'm sorry. Mr. Basler's got some questions.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Is there any limitations or, I mean, on the amount of vehicles that's gonna be on this one point? Three acres. Has anything been addressed to that?
It addresses it in his application or in his comments.
But it's none?
In ZAB, it just says 15. We'll ask.
As I understand now, the buffer can be, it don't have to be exactly with a fence. It don't have to be exactly 20-foot around three sides. We can have some leeway and be
You can be, you can be 40-foot planted or 20-foot with a fence. Is that correct? Or does it, is it got to be one or the other?
But we can't get that on the west because of the driveway where the Georgia Department of Transportation wants the driveway. We can't get that there. We could give more in the back and make it a, what's the word for it, Mr. Gilbert?
The overall average is what he would.
Average.
He would give an average of a 20- or 40-foot buffer. Based on the permit that Georgia Department of Transportation is issuing, they will only issue a permit for a driveway cut if it aligns with Upchurch Road, which moves the driveway entrance all the way over to the edge of the property, which that location of the driveway is probably the most safe and appropriate location for that. So at that particular place, there, no buffer could be installed because it's gonna be pavement. So if they did an average buffer of a wider buffer at the front and a smaller buffer at the back.
Does that meet the letter of the law, and you don't have a problem with it?
It is something that can be done in the ULDC. It does allow for averages to be done in certain circumstances, and in this circumstance, I believe it is something that could be done.
Mr. Hale, Mr. Basler wanted to know if there's gonna be a limit on the number of automobiles on the lot at any given time?
16 at the most.
16 at the most? Are you okay with that being a condition of zoning?
A gentleman that's putting in a used car lot wants to start with 16 spaces. There may be more cars at some time in there. It would be hard to say just how many. So I don't think we should put 16 as a condition of the zoning as a law that that's all you could ever have parked there.
Mr. Gilbert, as far as used car lots, is there any limit as far as the ordinance and what it calls for?
The code doesn't have a requirement as far as the maximum number of vehicles.
Thank you.
Any further questions from board members? Mr. Bowman?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I gotta do this, but I've gotta ask a couple of questions. Just one, actually. On the entrance, Jeremy, that's next to Laurel, Ashland, is that, that's the subdivision, that's the actual subdivision to the, if you're looking at it from there to the left, right?
That is correct.
So really, the only residential area, we're cutting out part of the buffer.
The part of the, that is a residential lot, is a non-buildable lot in that subdivision. There's no residents located on it.
Yes, sir.
At that particular point, but that would be the only true residential property in nature versus property that's own residential but has a commercial use on it.
Is that not an 80-foot easement between there?
That's an Oglethorpe, there's an 85-foot Oglethorpe easement on that west adjoining the driveway.
I pointed that, that's that section right there. I got you.
Yes, sir. That's it, sir.
Okay, okay. Never mind.
And then, then the lot, that 85-foot easement there, it's a commercial easement, Oglethorpe Power, then to your left there against the end of the picture, that is, that particular lot is a no-buildable lot, and it's also in the ordinances of the subdivision that it cannot be built on.
That's correct. So is that?
And the commercial easement, they can't even stack a storage building that is removable on that easement.
That's good. Thank you.
Mr. Stamey?
Do you have another, Mr. Bowman, I'm sorry?
Mr. Hale, is your DOT permit, is it requiring a decel lane, too?
No, sir. He did not want a decel lane. No, he, we're going to put in the, exactly what he's brought out for us to put on. He said it would be foolish to put a decel lane in because they have in the future, they will be putting in sometime in the future a decel lane, a left-turn lane on the other side of the highway, and a stoplight there. He said he couldn't tell me when it would be, but he said, "We're not going to put a decel lane in here now because we'd be tearing part of it out to add on to it later." That's what the man said.
And that was GDOT, Georgia Department of Transportation?
Yes, ma'am, Georgia. I've already got the permit to put in what he's recommended to put in, what they've.
Terry, is that consistent with GDOT? Because I've never seen.
Absolutely.
It is?
I think it's based more on how many right-turn vehicles are likely to come into the site, or how many vehicles are gonna come in and out on a per-day period. And if you look at the usage and the likelihood, for instance, at 55 miles an hour with an average traffic of 6,000 vehicles per day, he would have to have 50 right-turn vehicles a day come in before they would require a right-turn lane. On the left-turn lane, he would have to have 150 cars coming in per day, making a left-turn lane in at this speed in that volume of traffic before they would require left-turn lanes. So for this site, it's very unlikely that he would have 50 cars, you know, a day coming in, or 50 right-turn vehicles coming in, or 150 cars coming in, making a left turn in. So that's probably more the reason why they didn't require a decel lane or a left-turn lane in front of there.
Any additional questions?
Just for clarification, Madam Chair, we're going with the conditions that are stated in this book.
Yes, sir.
And was, is there a limit on the car spaces? I don't know. Okay. Okay.
I might add that David Simmons at the county DOT, I talked him about it, and he said they would not touch that. The state, whatever the state approved is what they would go with. And he was at the advisory committee, and that's what he stated.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, if not, I will look to you, Mr. Holder, for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this resolution in support of Mr. Hale and his application with the eight conditions as presented by staff.
We have a motion to approve with the eight conditions. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Jeffries. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. I'm sorry.
I was in opposition.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't count.
All right, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, Mr. Stamey is opposed, and all others voting in favor. So motion carries 4-0-1. All right, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a modification, MC-10-01. Hartman, Simmons, Spielman &amp; Wood, LLP. Jeff S. Danger of Atlanta, Georgia, requests multiple modifications to zoning conditions for property located on the south side of Turner Church Road, east of Airline Road, known as Brightwood Place subdivision Phase 1. The property is located within Commission District 3. Our presenter is Jeremy Gilbert, Planner 1, Exhibit Number 11.
Good evening again, board members. This request is for a modification to modify four conditions of zoning that were placed on the Phase 1 of Brightwood Place subdivision. Property was rezoned on April 20th of 2004 with nine conditions, and the applicant is requesting to modify four of those conditions. They're requesting to modify condition number one, which is all, the house sizes shall be a minimum of 2,500 square foot of heated space. Condition number two, homes shall be built on site, no modular homes will be allowed, two-car garage, side entry will be standard. Condition number four, all homes will be all sides brick, stone, or stucco, or any combination thereof. And number eight, all homes will be, will have sodded yards to the rear drip line of the homes. The applicant is requesting to modify those conditions to read as follows. Condition number one, the minimum house size shall be 1,800 square feet of heated space. Condition number two, no more than 30% of the lot shall be required to have side-entry garages. They will try to meet the requirement for side-entry garages as practical, given the topography features of each particular lot as determined by the Development Plan Review Department on case-by-case basis. Condition number four, to state that no vinyl siding shall be permitted on any home. And condition number eight, to read, all lots shall be ceded in accordance with common landscaping requirements. landscaping requirements. Planning staff has not, does not make, does not make a recommendation on this modification, but I will answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Jeremy? If not, I would ask the applicant or their representative to step forward at this time. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have fifteen minutes.
Good evening. Hi, Madam Chair and board members. My name is Jeff Danner. I'm with Law Firm of Hartman, Simmons, Spielman and Wood. I'm here tonight on behalf of the property owner. We're, we're acting as the applicant and their agent tonight, but the property owner is actually Regions Bank. It's a bank-owned property at this time. And the bank has owned, come into the ownership of this subdivision as, as is frequently becoming the case in a number of these properties, as I'm sure you all have seen around your county and throughout the metro area. Regions came in possession of the property approximately a year ago. They've been marketing it fairly aggressively ever since. There's been two contracts on the property previously, both of which fell through in large part due to reluctance on the part of the prospective purchasers to meet some of these zoning requirements and the standards that were put in place in two thousand and four. There is currently a third contract on the property, and it's with a fairly well-known local builder who believes they can make the project work if, if these types of conditions are relaxed and some more flexibility is given to the original zoning requirements or the modific, or the conditions that were placed on in two thousand and four. I suppose it's worth, you know, kind of rewinding back into, into that timeframe when the property was, when this was done in two thousand and four, and the property was then built out and platted, and final platted in two thousand and seven. It was a little bit of a different economic climate and a little bit of a different market climate for these types of developments, as I'm sure you all are aware. In the intervening three years since that time, things have changed, and we're, we're just asking for some flexibility to allow the property to no longer sit idle. It is, it is built out, the streets are in place, the sidewalks and many of the utilities and everything, it's, it's ready to go, but it's, we've, we've had a difficult time finding somebody that's been willing to take it on with the conditions that were put in place back when the market was, was a bit different. I believe that there will be high-quality development, non-production type grade homes that would go in in this property. The lot sizes are, are large. We're not asking for a reduction in lot size, setbacks, any of those types of standards, just a little flexibility in the size and the type of, of home to go in. And just to reiterate a little bit of what's in the staff report and in our, our application, we believe the application is consistent with ULDC. In fact, the, the requirements that we're asking meet are exceed the minimum zoning requirements that are in place under the R-three zoning. So we're not asking really for anything above and beyond what is, what is allowed under the, under the base zoning. We believe it's consistent with the ULDC of the zoning and not, not detrimental to the surrounding uses and usages in, in the area. It is somewhat of a self-contained subdivision area back in there, and we believe that once it's, it's put in place and completed, it will be, be an asset to the area and will be harmonious with the, the surrounding uses and if not a, a benefit to them. So that's, that's all I have for now.
Any board member have a question for Mr. Danner before I call for opposition? We will reserve your remaining time if you need to use that. At this time, I'm going to call, let me do this one first. Is there anyone here who is in favor of the applicant's request? Is anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Okay, if you could, Mr. Danner, if you could just have a seat for just a moment, we ask if you would just step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we will give you, give you fifteen minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jimmy Carter. I live at sixteen fifty-eight Turner Church Road in McDonough, and our family owns and operates Southern Belle Farm. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the proposed zoning modifications to Brightwood. This zoning was originally approved on April twentieth, two thousand and four, and was actually preceded on the same agenda by zoning approved for what is now Hickory Hills on Airline Road and Longleaf on Turner Church Road. These three proposed subdivisions were discussed as a whole, and there was a great deal of community involvement in this fairly lengthy process. At this time, I would like to bring out some of the history of this process by reading some of the comments made at this meeting on April twentieth, two thousand and four. And again, the first quote is from Commissioner Holder, who's on the board still with us tonight regarding zoning for what is now Hickory Hills and Longleaf. Mr. Holder said this is one of the first times in eight years that he has seen a complete turnaround in a community. Jimmy, if you're responsible for it, or Mr. Bun, somebody did a lot of homework and a lot of negotiating to come out with a positive impact on a community that was totally negative. I move on to another comment that was made actually regarding the zoning of the, of the property in question tonight. And at the time, it was made by Mr. Frank Potts, who was speaking in, in relation to the Brightwood development. Actually, I'll, I'll start it in mid-paragraph. It says, "By doing so, we added ten acres out to Turner Church Road, and we have worked with Mr. Bun to tie into his sewer on his project that extends to Walnut Creek. We have proposed fifty-seven lots, and we have been in meetings with the citizens of that area. We have met with Mr. Carter and Mr. Stamey, and have a letter of agreement to raise the standards bar and to keep the quality of home values and quality of life in this area to a standard that will increase." Following this, there was a motion by then Commissioner Harper to approve the rezoning of this property with the following conditions. The house sizes will be a minimum of twenty-five hundred square feet of heated space. Homes shall be built on site. No modular homes will be allowed. Two car garages side entry will be standard. Number three, sidewalks to be installed on both sides of the street. Number four, all homes will be all sides brick, stone, or stucco, or any combination thereof. Number five, developer shall install acceleration, deceleration lanes in accordance with the Henry County Department of Transportation standards. Number six, no permit shall be issued until sewer is made available on site. Number seven, phase three of the lake subdivision will be replatted by the developer prior to the final plating of the proposed subdivision. Number eight, all homes will have sodded yards to the rear drip line of the home. And number nine, there will be a maximum of fifty-two lots in the subdivision. Following the presentation of this motion, then Commissioner Friedman seconded and committed the builder developer for raising the standards. This is a beautiful subdivision. You have gone with a higher density in R-two, and you have dropped it down to fifty-two, about two units per acre, and therefore have raised the standards, and an admirable one, based on what the planning and zoning board recommended, that was even much less, and you have raised your own bar. Following this, Mr. Holder commented that he did not want to give the builder all the glory because had it not been for the people sitting out here in the neighborhood effort, those standards probably would not have been raised. He said, "This is a good example of what the community working together can do." Again, this is just some history going back to the meeting held in, in April of two thousand and four. We, as adjoining property owners, are opposed to the proposed zoning modifications before us tonight because the compromise that was reached back in two thousand and four was a result of a lot of community input from people deeply concerned with the quality of growth in our neighborhood. We feel it would be a step backwards for us, and allowing modifications to Brightwood could negatively impact the future development of the larger property across the road known as Longleaf, and could even go further and, and further drop the standards that have been set by the zoning that was done in April of two thousand and four. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Penny Adams. I live in Ridgewood Estates, and as the crow flies, my neighborhood, Brightwood would be directly behind my neighborhood. First of all, thank you to the board, and especially Randy for being very patient with all my questions of late. It has been communicated to the citizens many times in the past that the land use plan is a guideline, and that it does not mean that anyone can get a specific zoning or zoning modification simply because the land use plan says that it is zoned as such. Just because the area is now classified on the land use plan as R-three, it doesn't mean we need to reduce the housing quality that is expected for that area. This subdivision currently sits on the same sewer system as Hickory Hills and Longleaf. And I want to state some statistics quickly that play into an informed decision on this, on this situation. Foreclosures in January of this year increased fifteen percent from the same month last year according to Realty Track. Banks repossessed more than eighty-seven thousand homes in January. This is nationwide, by the way. Fannie Mae reported in January that the rate of borrowers who have a conventional loan and are seriously delinquent was five point two-nine percent in November. We're not talking subprime mortgage here, we're talking conventional. So that needs to be considered. There were a record two point eight million households that were threatened with foreclosure last year, and the numbers are expected to rise between three and three point five million this year. Georgia is in the top ten in the foreclosure rates in the nation. Please think about that when you consider these modification requests. Henry County is also a participant in the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and as such, it's received stimulus money to purchase foreclosed homes, refurbish them, and then turn around and sell them in an effort to stave off blighted areas. This is an approximate figure, but since the inception of the program, the county has had an inventory as high as roughly sixty homes, of which approximately eleven have been sold. Progress is seemingly slow, and this is an obvious result of the diminished market of potential buyers who can qualify for a loan. The greatest chance of housing market stabilization will come from buyers who have been conservative and responsible with their credit and who are looking for housing upgrades at better prices. Building what is, in effect, starter homes makes no sense whatsoever, is fiscally irresponsible, and is short-sighted. If these zoning modifications are granted, the Tax Assessor's Office likewise should lower our property assessments as a result because our, our property values will diminish. I'm reading directly from the letter of intent from the bank, and in there it says, there's a couple of points I want to make. They state, "Eliminate the condition requiring brick, stucco, or stone, and replace it with a condition that contain, that is no vinyl siding, no vinyl siding will be permitted at any time on the homes." That's already there, so that argument is moot. We require, all right, the second point they make is re-request that the requirement that all yards be sited, to be sited, to be deleted and replaced with a requirement that all lots be ceded in accordance with common landscape requirements. Well, in that area, ceded lots are not common. They also state one other thing. "Our request is based on the change in economic conditions confronting this area of Henry County. The original developer for Brightwood went bankrupt as a result of not being able to sell the home sites. We believe," and I'm quoting them, "that one of the causes for his inability to develop the subdivision were the zoning requirements." I submit to those who are present that the home sizes, garages, building materials, and landscaping have absolutely no bearing on why Mr. Potts did not finish this development. Instead, a combination of excessive growth and less-than-stellar lending practices by bank, by the banking industry, tanked the real estate market and put all of America in the midst of the worst recession in recent memory. I respectfully request to this board to not approve these modification requests. In the alternative, I ask that Regions and their representatives work closely with our commissioner to come up with a creative solution to this problem loan that is more in line with the high quality of living that is found in our district. Regions received, and I want this to be pointed out, received approximately three point five billion dollars in tax bailout money from the tax-paying public. We are asking that they use this wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition? If you would, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Larry Garcia, I'm at seventy-eight Walnut Way, which is just up the street from this property. I just wanted to review with you quickly our attempts last year as a third district group to affect the future land use map. And as you may remember, there was a forty-two-hundred acre parcel that we were trying to keep in a rural classification. We were unsuccessful. This property is on the border of that, so it is still a rural area. The character of this area is rural. And we were told by the zoning board, and I believe by this board as well, that by classifying this area not rural but as low-density, that we would be able to control it better. Our fear then is just what has happened tonight, that developers and builders would come in and they would go for the maximum because that's what was allowed in the code. We wanted to keep the classifications at a lower density rate, but we were unsuccessful. If it is true that we can control better with this classification, we ask you to control it and keep the standards high so that it is consistent with the character of this area, which is rural and estate lots and high-value property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. We still have three minutes remaining for anyone who wishes to speak in opposition.
Madam Chairman, while there are others that are coming, we received a letter today also that I'd like to enter into the record in opposition.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Keith Rogers. I live at one-one-seven-one Turner Church, which is just west of Airline from the development. The only thing else that I'd like to add is that the community, not everyone was here tonight, but our neighbors and friends have asked us to all come and express our concerns with lowering the, the standards of the property that is in question. We also question, you know, if, if the bank doesn't have a developer right now, what type of developer are they going to end up with? And simply by lowering the standards so they can sell the property is not in the best interest of the citizens that live in, in that area. And the other piece that I'm concerned about is that the school systems are overcrowded right now. We need a higher tax base, not, not more people with lower tax base, and smaller homes and lesser quality homes are going to be in less value and less value from the homes in the surrounding area, and it's only going to be a ripple effect. We're going to have lower funds for schools and more kids. So our hope is that you'll stick with the original terms of, of the negotiations for the zoning as originally applied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak with about a minute and forty-five seconds? If not, I'd ask Jeremy if you could please read into record the name of the individual who sent the email in opposition.
Yes, the opposition email is from a Mike and Vicky Whitaker. They live at twenty-one sixty-nine Turner Church Road, and they just wanted that their voice be heard, they cannot be here tonight, that they are in opposition of the modification being requested for Brightwood Place subdivision.
Thank you, Jeremy. At this time, I'd ask the applicant if he would come forward, and if there's anything else that you would like to add. You still have a little bit of time on the clock.
I believe Regions, you know, appreciates and understands the, the concerns that have been expressed tonight. The unfortunate fact of the matter is that, as stated previously, the, they have been unable to locate and, and close a transaction with a, an interest, any buyers that are, were willing to proceed with, with the property, with the conditions that are in place. Things are different than they were in two thousand and four, two thousand and seven. There is a buyer now that's interested, that's reputable, that's well-known and well, well-financed and well-backed. We believe they will bring up quality development. I think all we're asking for tonight is some flexibility in, in what they're able to do with those lots. I don't believe these would be starter homes. They would be high-quality improvements. We're not asking to increase density. I just want to make sure that that's clear this evening. I just want to make sure that that's clear this evening. And overall, we feel that the request meets the standards for relief and is set forth in the guidelines under the ULDC and the ordinance for a modification, and we would just respectfully request approval and be happy to answer any further questions.
Are there any questions from board members at this time? All right, if not, Mr. Stamey, I'll look to you as this lies in your district, and I'll look to you for a motion.
Just a quick comment. Mr. Carter, we could just about play a take-back from the meeting that was six years ago, couldn't we? It was April six years ago, sir. Jeffries, as you can see, with this subdivision and Ben had a lot of opposition, just like it does tonight. And I really, I mean, I appreciate your time, but I think the message that Henry County wants to send is we don't mind looking at case-per-case basis, but we're not ready to create a fire cell environment down here yet. And with that, I'd like the motion that we deny all the requests.
We have a motion by Mr. Stamey to deny the request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next item. This item, MC-10-02, again Hartman, Simmons, Spielman &amp; Wood, LLP. Jeff Dayner of Atlanta, Georgia requests multiple modifications to zoning conditions for property located on the south side of Turner Church Road, east of Airline Road, known as Brightwood Place subdivision Phase II. The property is located within Commission District Number Three, thus Exhibit Number 12.
Good evening, again, board members. The request that is before you is a modification to Phase II of Brightwood Place subdivision. This property was rezoned on December 21 of 2004 with nine conditions. The applicant is requesting to modify four conditions. When Phase II was zoned in December, it was granted the same conditions that were placed on the previous modification that was just heard. They're requesting to modify the same four conditions with the same language for modifications of those conditions, and I will answer any questions that you have in regards to this modification.
Are there any questions at this time for staff? If not, Mr. Dayner, if you'd like to come forward. Same scenario as last time. You have 15 minutes.
Don't think I'll take up any too much more time this late in the evening. This is obviously just a companion piece to the prior application that says the same subdivision. I think they were just addressed in two phases previously, so same points that we made previously. You know, unfortunately, it appears that the choice at this point is, you know, the property remaining vacant for an undetermined, unknown period of time going forward, or trying to determine a way to make it more appealing for development to proceed. And we understand that there's opposition to relaxing some requirements that were put in place during sort of the go-go times of a few years back, but market realities that Regents is seeing, and as all of our developer and lender clients are seeing, is flexibility is the key right now to be able to encourage growth and development to take place, and we feel that the application doesn't overreach and meets the requirements and the factors within the ULDC and the code for relief, and we would, you know, respectfully request approval, but I'll just leave it at that for this evening. Thank you.
Right, we will reserve the remainder of your time. At this time, I would ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this request. Let the record reflect that there is not. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? If you would, state your name for the record, and you have 15 minutes.
Yes, my name is Jimmy Carter. I live at 1658 Turner Church Road, and as I've stated previously, we feel that through a lot of community input and involvement in 2004, we reached a compromise. We certainly feel that we would be going backwards if we relaxed the standards that were set in, and would not be in the best interest of the neighborhood that we live in and the property that joins us. Thank you.
Mr. Carter? Anyone else like to speak in opposition to the request?
Penny Adams. Just a couple of points. Randy mentioned a fire cell, and I want to reiterate the fact that if this is approved, this could very well start an avalanche of similar requests in the area and throughout Henry County, because we all know that there are some troubled banks with properties they can't do anything with at the moment. I wanted to ask the representative for Regents Bank, have you traveled the area where this property is located?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What do you see in the area?
Got a mixture of agricultural use and some residential infill.
But of the residential areas, what do you think about the quality?
Very nice.
Very nice. That's what we'd like to keep it. He mentions a number of times, "market reality." It wasn't created by myself or my neighbors. It was created by massive growth, not properly managed, and lending practices that I mentioned earlier were less-than-stellar. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the applicant's request?
My name is Mike Rush, 85 Highland Heart Drive, District Three. Just want to say a couple of things. First of all, he mentioned several times that he's not asking for a higher density, not changing the density. I think the property has already been created with the lot sizes. Everything's in there. You pretty much can't change that lot density, right?
Well, you can go back.
Yeah, for a lot of money, but you're not going to do that, so you're not really giving us anything back there. And quite frankly, as Penny mentioned earlier, Regents took 3.5 billion in bailout money, and this essentially is a bailout of the bank again, and I personally am tired of bailing out everybody. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? At this time, I'd ask the applicant if he would come back to the microphone. Does any board member have a question, a comment from the applicant, or does the applicant have anything else that you would like to add?
I've concluded with my comments for the evening. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you, Mr. Stamey.
I have a comment for Jeremy. Jeremy, why couldn't we've handled this with just, with one variant, or just one slide? Because this has been recorded as one subdivision, correct?
It has been plotted as one subdivision, but as two phases, and when the property was originally rezoned, it was rezoned as two separate resolutions. And in order to, for the applicant, in order for him to amend or modify those conditions, he would have to modify each resolution, therefore it had to be heard as two separate items.
Okay. I was thinking that once it got recorded, it became one whole subdivision, and we could have just handled this all at one time.
It is still one subdivision, but this subdivision has two rezoning cases associated with it.
Okay.
I guess it's for consistency, and the legal records with the zoning cases have to match up, so there has to be a decision on each.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, Mr. Stamey, this lies in your district, and I'll look to you for a motion.
Make a motion, we deny the request.
Have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Mr. County Manager, do you have any comments for public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney, any comments?
No, ma'am.
At this, at this time, we have one citizen who has signed up for public comment, and I'll call her forward at this time. Annette, and I'm probably going to mess this up, Powellidge of 936 Maple Leaf Drive in McDonough, and you're here to speak on the Campground Road extension, and we will give everyone an opportunity to clear the room so that you won't be distracted, but you'll have five minutes. Let's just give everybody a moment to step out.
For the overview, just, I just put?
Just lay it down, yes.
Just lay it down, okay.
Let's give them just another minute or two to get out of the room. Okay, good evening.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Chairman Mathis and Board of Commissioners, you've seen me here before, but this is the first time that I've actually spoken about the Campground Road extension. Of course, you know that I oppose it, as it is going to cut half, cut in half our community, which is Winslow at Eagles Landing subdivision. You know, a man's home is his castle, and that's what my husband and I have tried, you know, to provide for us at Winslow at Eagles Landing. We came here from Fort Carson, Colorado, a place which is basically semi-arid, devoid of trees. We like trees, and so that was one thing that we were looking for when we bought our home. 936 Maple Leaf Drive is at the wood line of where Campground Road Extension is going to be. It's at that corridor. And I want you to be sure that you know what is at stake here. Okay, there you go. We have many woodpeckers that come by our home. We like the birds. In fact, my husband has been overseas serving in the military quite a bit since 9/11, and the same is true for our time here in Georgia. This is the first home that we have ever built, or had built, and the one that we've ever owned, because we have moved around quite extensively in the military. Because of my husband's job, he needs peace and quiet. At one point, peace, when we were discussing this with some other people that our board had meetings with from the Henry County government, peace and quiet was kind of scoffed at, you know, as, but it is. He's an Army chaplain. He deals with life and death issues every day for the soldiers and their families. Peace and quiet is essential. That was one reason that we decided to move into the subdivision where we are. There's many type of woodpeckers there. Woodpeckers like older woods. You know, you're not going to find them with young trees. I have pictures of about four different woodpeckers that have been in our yard. We have a wild area in our yard. The first one that you saw was the red-bellied woodpecker. The second one, we think, is a yellow-bellied sap-sucker. This one is a red-headed woodpecker. And of course, the downy is rather familiar. It's quite prevalent, and you can tell I have a new camera, just taking all these pictures. However, during the recent snowstorm, we had a visitor. This is also taken from our yard. Okay, the owls and the woodpeckers live in older woods, so the corridor where Campground Road Extension will be, will be built, or may be built, we hope it will not be built in our subdivision, will destroy in older woods. This is a pine warbler. The pine warbler only nests in pine trees. We have a lot of pine trees in that woods. And then, of course, this is more common. This is a pine cyskin, who also, of course, prefers pine trees. All of these, plus many more, will be lost. We've seen peliated woodpeckers. We've seen hairy woodpeckers, and that's six right there. Plus, we have other wildlife in our area. This also will be lost in the woods, if the woods actually become a road. We've been told recently that there will not be an environmental study. We hope that there will be. There's another woodpecker that is rapidly declining in the state of Georgia. It's the red-cocketed woodpecker. There is a conservation area near Fort Stewart where they are actually, you know, bringing them in so that they will, you know, mate and become more prevalent. But what if, since we have so many woodpeckers in our woods, what if there's a red-cocketed woodpecker in the, I'll call it, the Winslow Woods? Would this government, Henry County government, be willing to transport, transfer those birds to another area to save them, because they are declining?
Ms. Powellidge, I want to interrupt you, and I apologize, but your five minutes has expired for public comment, and we do appreciate you presenting that information to us. Beautiful pictures, by the way. Beautiful photographs.
Pardon? Oh, thank you. I sometimes, a picture speaks louder than words.
Agreed. Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments this evening.
Thank you.
Moving on in the agenda, we have the announcements of the upcoming meetings and events. March 1st at 9:00 a.m. is a workshop meeting, and Tuesday, March 12th at 9:00 a.m. is a regular board meeting. On Monday, March 15th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, March 16th at 6:30 p.m., these are both regular board meetings. If there's no further business to come before this board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Mr. Jeffries, and a second by Mr. Basler. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. We stand adjourned.